All right, we're getting better at being on time. So 10:04, we're going to call the meeting of the March 21 Board of Commissioners meeting to a order. Note the presence of all three board members. I'd like to ask my colleague Commissioner Mckeeja to lead us in the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the
My nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Sorry to throw you that curveball. All right, we're going to start with some comments. So just a reminder again that March is Women's History Month, and at our last meeting, we honored some Montgomery County women who lead in government and business for Women's History Month. Today, I'm proud to recognize some women who lead in our community through amazing public service. We have here today representatives from the White Marsh Community Ambulance Association, so if you wouldn't mind standing, which as we understand it is the only station in Montgomery County with entirely female chiefs. You also have a predominantly female crew, which does make you quite unique in your field. Here with us today are the three chiefs Rebecca Werner, Maria Price Pierce, and Kristin Kovacs? Did I get that right? Okay. As well as Board Chair Gina Bradley and EMT Eileen Rawl. So thank you for your service. Rebecca told me about this story when I was out on the campaign trail, and she insisted that I come out and meet you, and I thought, why not bring you here and celebrate you breaking glass ceilings and being women leaders in our community? So thank you for your service. I know your jobs are tough, and I want to thank you for being here so we could take a moment to acknowledge you. So let's give them a round of applause. All right, next up, we have a mother-daughter duo that I came to learn about back last summer, Makara and Betsy. Pronounce it for me again?
Gekonge.
Gekonge, who are both volunteer firefighters with Barron Hill Fire Company in Lafayette Hill. The Gekonges became the county's first mother-daughter pair of volunteer firefighters in August after completing 180 hours of training. Montgomery County, like many other parts of Pennsylvania, is experiencing a shortage of volunteer firefighters. So thank you, if you could stand up, thank you to both of you for stepping up to serve your communities. And I'm going to put a special plug in that anyone who is an active EMS or firefighter volunteer will be able to apply for a tax rebate for the county real estate tax, thanks to our recently passed rebate program. And more information is available on our finance website. And we want to encourage, the reason why we bring these human interest stories to the county and to the commissioners meeting, because we want to encourage more people, especially women, to serve their communities in this capacity. So thank you for being here. Next, I want to acknowledge a local small business owner that wasn't able to be here last time, Dina Dent. Dina, stand up for me. I've known since we were in high school in Narristown, and I've watched her business ventures flourish, a successful entrepreneur. She was, you're still a hairstylist, right? So you own a hairstylist right on Marshall Street in Narristown, making women like me beautiful. But you set off on a new adventure, and I watched you via Facebook launch Dent Dumps, Hauling, and Dumpster Rentals, which is the first woman minority waste removal company in Montgomery County based out of Lansdale, PA. You were also a recipient of the Recovery's Office Small Business Grant Program that focused on minority women and veteran-owned businesses, which offered criticals to support to so many during the pandemic. So I know how hard it is to lead a business. It's been amazing as former classmates to see your journey. So thank you for being here, and all the best in the success of your business ventures. So thank you. Next, I want to mention this spring, the Department of Health and Human Services is requesting help collecting cleaning supplies and toiletries for families in need. You can donate cleaning supplies such as disinfectant wipes or spray, as well as hygiene items such as toothpaste and brushes. This full list is available on the screen and on our website. Drop donations to the Montgomery County Human Services Center at 1430 DeKalb Street in Narristown from now until May 24. And also, the last thing, I'd like to remind everyone that the deadline is approaching for applications for the Montgomery County Commission for Women. The deadline is March 28. So for more information and how to apply for the commission, visit montgomerycountypa.gov/womenscommission. So I'd like to turn it over to Commissioner Mckeeja for his comments.
Thank you. I have two things to raise this morning. Thanks, everyone, for being here. One is an acknowledgement of a contract we awarded last week, which was our renewable energy supplier. So we've set a goal of 100% renewable energy for Montgomery County by 2030, and this partnership that we have with our surrounding counties is going to help enable us to do that. So the Sustainable Energy Partnership of Southeastern Pennsylvania gives us a mechanism to buy energy together as a region, and we have more control and more access to renewable energy, whether it's wind or solar, as a result. So we voted last week to authorize WGL Energy Services to be that provider for the collar counties, and that's a really important step for us to help reach those goals. The second thing I wanted to discuss was that this month is also Intellectual and Developmental Disability Awareness Month, and we have a proclamation for an important organization in Montgomery County and the leadership that's here from them today. I want to say that across the country, there's about a 1% to 3% population of the whole country that has intellectual or developmental disability. It cuts across racial, socioeconomic, educational, ethnic backgrounds. People with intellectual and developmental disabilities come from all walks of life. There are family members, friends, neighbors, and find fulfillment living everyday lives. And it's really important for us to recognize the important work that we have to do as a county to support people with disabilities generally, and this month recognizing intellectual and developmental disabilities. One of the great organizations we have in Montgomery County is the ARC Alliance, based in Eagleville. It has extensive experience working directly with people with disabilities and their families. And today, ARC is represented by their CEO, Pat Leo, and Sarah Robinson, their marketing and event coordinator. I would ask them to stand today. Let's stand. So Sarah's here, and I'm going to call you up here in just a second. But since its founding in 1951, the ARC Alliance has grown to become a major advocate for the rights of people with developmental disabilities. In your most recent annual report, I saw that ARC has served over 1,118 children and 1,600 individuals by providing early intervention, coordination, and guardianship and representation paid services to individuals with disabilities. Here in Montgomery County, we encourage every citizen to support the efforts and work of individuals with intellectual disabilities and their families as they thrive and seek to fulfill self-determined lives and realize their personal aspirations. So with that, I'm proud to recognize March as Intellectual and Developmental Disability Awareness Month, and I'll bring our leadership from the ARC up for the proclamation. Thanks. Quick question. All right, Joe, come back.
This is Pat, just to confirm.
Ready?
All right, thank you. Really appreciate it.
Montgomery County has always been a continuous
Hang on. I just want to check to see. I thought I had. I rearranged my comments a little bit because yesterday was, we had a big fire over Montgomery Township, Montgomeryville Township yesterday, where it was in Falls, let me get the right name, the Shametie Falls. Come on. Anyway, it was in Shametie Falls, and it's a community of 55-plus community, there's about 900 residents. The good thing is, is that, I shouldn't say it's a good thing, well, it is a good thing that no one was hurt. That's always a positive, but it was their clubhouse itself, but it's still, it's a big inconvenience for that area, and it's unfortunate, and hopefully, they'll be able to get rebuilding as quick as possible. Of course, the staff out there did an amazing job in responding to that fire as quick as possible and trying to, you know, make sure nothing else was affected by it. But even more importantly, or more upsetting, I should say, is last night, or late yesterday afternoon, there was a huge fire in Roarsford, Pennsylvania, which happens to be my backyard. There was six homes that went up. The Roarsford police officer saw smoke at one of the homes and didn't see anything else, went to that home, went, you know, knocked on a door, no one answered, and made the decision to go in to see if he could locate the fire. Only saw something, you know, smoldering or whatever, didn't seem like it was a big fire, went outside to call the fire department, and actually, as he was going out the door, the whole six homes just ignited. Now, he wasn't, he was out, he got out okay, there was no injuries there. But the unfortunate thing is, we have six families that are displaced now from this fire. From what I understand, there were six departments, six, seven different fire departments that responded, they were there late into the evening, working extremely hard. Of course, I want to thank all of the fire departments that were responding, all the emergency services that were there, and I know that the families that were affected by it, they're, I believe they stayed locally at the firehouse overnight, they set them up, and today, they'll be looking for, I talked with the council out in Roarsford, and they'll be looking to see if there's family members that they could stay with, or see if there's about getting them in hotel rooms, or whatever it may be. The Red Cross was already responded, and from the county perspective, HHS, Health and Human Services, as well as Department of Public Safety, were already engaged, they moved quickly to respond. I want to commend our departments for being so accessible and moving as quick as they have to be there as resources as well. The fire departments, I can't say enough, and, oh, they actually, unfortunately, they left, but I can't say that what they do every day is just simply amazing. If you see pictures from that blaze, it's just, when you see, it's just six row homes, basically, and there's right up to other row homes. And the fire department, all six were engulfed in flames, but the fire department was able to prevent that from spreading any further down the block. So they did an amazing job. They couldn't save the six homes, unfortunately, but they were able to save everything else around it from igniting. So it was a quick fire, but again, no one was hurt, no one was actually home in any of those homes at the time, because I think it was like four or five o'clock when it started. So from what I understand, unfortunately, only, there was one pet that didn't make it out, but other than that, everyone else was safe, and all the departments are going to be working and following up. I know our county departments will be working and following up today, and I know there's meetings out in Roarsford scheduled all day to make sure that everything's taken care of and wrapped up for these people as well. So I want to thank everyone that was involved, and commend them for all their services. I will, I just want to point out one other thing, and then we'll get going here. We had the opportunity, on a bright note, we had the opportunity the other day to settle another farm preservation, working with the college settlement in Horsham, which I have to admit, I didn't know that that actually existed before, and I was really excited to find out and learn a lot about what the college settlement is. But we, you know, working with the county, the Horsham Borough, and as well as the state, we were able to preserve another 35 acres, and these acres of farmland will be maintained and leased to the Penny Pack Farms, an education center, and the surrounding natural land trusts. Will remain a working farm perpetually with the space for college settlements, summer camp, and outdoor school programs. So we have, it's a great program that's underway here in the county, working with the state to preserve these farmlands. It's a wonderful opportunity for when we have these farmlands, that they could be passed down from generation to generation. It is a shrinking community, our farmland, and we don't see as many young people going into farming like we used to see in the past, and I know that places like the college settlement are working hard to educate and show, you know, our younger kids today that farming is very rewarding, and there's great opportunities out there, and of course, you know, farming is so essential to everything, you know, within our livelihood. So we want to be out there supporting farmland preservation and supporting the farming community as much as we can, so we need to do everything we possibly can from a county, as well as the state, to continue to enhance our opportunities around farmlands. So I'm going to end there because
Okay. We'll get, we'll get to that.
Yeah.
Okay. I wanted to invite Dina Dent up for a picture really, really quick. She didn't get to have one before the meeting. I hope you all don't mind, so we'll take a quick, a quick picture. All right, next on our agenda, I'd like to invite Jenny Burkholder and Evan Wang up to the podium. So Jenny is the Monco Poet Laureate, and Evan Wang is the Monco Youth Poet Laureate. They're going to talk to us about World Poetry Day coming up to the, you could go right there, yes. Come on, okay. It's up to you. Okay.
Thank you, friends. It's an honor to be asked to be here today, representing Montgomery County, as the Montgomery County Poet Laureate. This program has been going on for over 25 years here in Montgomery County, and I have been the poet laureate for the last year. I have been giving readings in public libraries. I have been giving readings and doing poetry workshops in meeting houses. I've had an opportunity to work in our local independent schools, so it has been a real thrill to represent Montgomery County. The poet laureate is every year, and there is, we have a wonderful website and programming that we do throughout the year that draws attention to poets and how poetry can really change people's lives here in Montgomery County. So I have the opportunity, I was invited to actually read a poem, so I will read a poem, and then Evan, our youth poet laureate, our first youth poet laureate, will also read a poem. So thank you again for inviting us, and thank you for this opportunity. My poem is titled "Reincarnation." Returning, I'll be a do-gooder, a dog-goner, beloved pillowcase, scrumptious bakery bun. Perhaps I'll be a pretentious jazz singer or comic relief, finger-wagger, disco dancer, the one who falls in love with the crossing guard as I drop my kids at school. I'll return as Larry Levis so I can write, and then you feel, or you begin to feel. I'll sleep in a tub of hot water, buoying up my decaying insides, head propped on a pink inflatable pillow. Either way, I'll be back, again and again, as sweet-sour puckered lips, yellow in mustard, that person holding your hand as you drift off to sleep.
Okay, hi, everyone. My name is Evan Wang. I am the first youth poet laureate of Montgomery County, and it's so great to see so many familiar faces around here today. The youth poet laureate program is brand-new. It just started in 2022, and in the past year, we've done some incredible work. We've reached over 900 teenagers across the county. We've taught creative writing and publishing to over 190 young people, and I've led workshops, open mics at libraries, civil rights activist groups, and more. And actually, last month, I was invited by the Biden administration to the White House to speak on youth policy as well. So we've been on a high. Thank you so much for providing me the space today to read my poem. This piece is titled "Muse For Night." Because a ceiling fan sliced open the belly of this life, you see me. I'm jeweled by moonlight thrown in through the window, the blanket over me like a dress nearly torn off. I am so off-center, so full of hours and of you, I think sleep is knocking at the door. I will not answer, can't answer. The door stands fatherly above a pool of hurt. Hurt is the only verb I understand, you sometimes, star-bodied. No, I have met the worst version of myself. I have apologized for love, sorry. You see me only when I am using, only when I am all touch and no hands. But this is me at my most beautiful. The glint of my teary eye like stolen diamonds, listen, let these words be just what they are. I love you too. Thank you.
Thank you both for being here, and congratulations. I remember when I wrote my first poem, it was a haiku, I think it was, but that was about it. So thank you for bringing your talent to Montgomery County. All right, next up, I'd like to invite Christina Miller to the podium to talk about our Community Health Assessment. Thank you for being here.
Thank you for inviting me, and what a beautiful way to start this, to start this meeting. Thank you for sharing the time and gifts with us. Good morning, commissioners, neighbors, colleagues. I'm here this morning to talk about a survey that's about to go live in our county, and that's part of our Community Health Assessment. Next slide, please. Before I talk about the survey itself, I'd like to give just a little bit of background about community health assessments in general. So they're all operating with a little bit of a level, more level playing field about community health. Community health assessments, and these are sometimes also called community health needs assessments, are typically conducted by nonprofit hospitals and health systems, as well as health departments, state and local health departments. They're used to describe the health of a community. That includes more than just health conditions, though. The community health assessment should also describe the factors that contribute to health. We sometimes hear these referred to as social determinants of health, or drivers of health. These are what we would consider the building blocks of health, the conditions of communities where we live, work, learn, play, and pray, that influence our ability to be well. And I'll get into this a little bit more in a moment. The community health assessment also helps us to understand how these conditions may be different across populations or groups within a community. Montgomery County ranks fourth in terms of health outcomes and conditions that contribute to health in Pennsylvania. However, that health and wellness is not equally enjoyed by all, and community health assessments can help us to illuminate those differences. In addition, it's critically important for us to understand where those differences or inequities exist, so that we can effectively and efficiently target our collective work to ensure that every Montgomery County resident has the opportunity to achieve their best health. Finally, a community health assessment includes a description of the assets and resources that help people to get and stay healthy. For hospitals, community health needs assessments describe the health of a hospital or health system catchment area, and it's required for obtaining or retaining nonprofit status. For health departments, the community health assessment describes the health of the health department's jurisdiction. In this case, for us, it's the health of the county. Next slide, please. The assessment is part of an ongoing process. The results of a community health assessment are used to identify our collective priorities, and as a health department, we may track a lot of data about health, the health of our population, and the factors that contribute to health, but a community health assessment also enables us to understand more about the conditions and experiences that drive health from our residents' perspectives. We use this information to inform the work that we do and how we do it, but it's more than that. The aggregate information that becomes available through this process belongs to everyone. So we use the information collected to work together with community partners to develop and implement a community-wide health improvement plan. That's a plan in which we all have a part, to help foster the conditions through which our residents can get and stay healthy. This process is repeated every three years, giving us time to understand community conditions, develop plans with partners, implement that plan, and then monitor how that's going and what is changing as a result. So in three more years, I'll be back here talking about the Community Health Assessment So coming back to what's included, the Community Health Assessment helps us to paint a picture of the health and wellness of our community, the health conditions that our residents are experiencing, and, as I mentioned, the factors that contribute to those, to their health conditions. Quality of life of our communities, do folks feel connected to one another? Do they feel safe in their communities? It also addresses health behaviors. Are folks, do folks have a healthcare provider? Are they able to get to their healthcare provider? When was the last time they had a cancer screening? Where does health fall on their list of priorities? What are the income, education, and employment characteristics of our communities? And what are the assets and resources, like parks, libraries, grocery stores, and healthcare providers in our communities? And very importantly, stories from our residents. We can see percentages and proportions and numbers, and it's the stories behind those statistics that really bring the Community Health Assessment to life and to make a deal. Next slide, please. This entire process has been guided by an extraordinary group of partners, representing not just community departments and offices, but also community partners. On a monthly basis, representatives from these organizations that you see listed here have spent their time providing guidance on this full process, from our primary areas of focus for this assessment, to the questions that we ask and how we ask them. They will help us to interpret and contextualize the information that we assemble, and they'll guide us on the best ways to share reports emerging from this process with our community so that the information is available, accessible, and digestible. Our team extends enormous gratitude to this group, which has been meeting monthly and fielding calls and emails for us in the interim to provide perspective and guidance. Next slide, please. So where are we in the process? A lot of work has gone into the Community Health Assessment already over the past several months, really since last summer. Our team has been planning, and as you can see, we've just entered into this spring phase, and this is where the process really comes to life, and it becomes a little bit more community-facing. I'll say a little bit more about that in a moment, but you can see here that we still have quite a bit of ways to go. After we collect information over the next several weeks, we will begin to analyze and interpret the data, and we aim to produce a summary report this summer, and then move into that planning process that I mentioned earlier. So diving a little bit more deeply into what you'll see over the next few months, we're about to go live with a community survey and focus groups. The survey will launch next week. The survey will be available in the top 10 languages spoken in Montgomery County, according to the 2020 census. That survey is in the final stage of translation, and that means that they're loaded onto a platform that we'll be using to collect data, and they're being reviewed for accuracy. Once that process is final, the survey will be available for residents to complete. And I will mention that the survey will be available both in electronic form And I will mention that the survey will be available both in electronic format and paper format. In addition, beginning in April, we will host eight to 10 focus groups on a variety of topics. Focus groups will be held both in-person and virtually and will cover topics that were identified as priority areas by our steering committee, but maybe don't lend themselves very well to a survey. Those include things like maternal and child health, the role of education in supporting health and wellness, and how we can address mental health, substance use, and other stressors that have a direct impact on our health and wellness. Again, a summary report will be available from what we learned this summer. Next slide, please. So I know you're all chomping at the bit for how to get involved. There are several ways to be involved with this process. First, if you are an adult resident of Montgomery County, please take this survey. The survey will become available, like I said, next week and can be found at montgomerycountypa.gov/cha, Community Health Assessment. It will also be available in paper format at several locations throughout the county, including libraries, senior centers, and other locations. And a listing and a map of those locations can be found on that same website. Next, share the survey with friends, family, neighbors, and constituents. We have assembled a communications toolkit for those who would like to share information about the survey. It, too, is available in the top 10 languages spoken in the county. And the toolkit is designed to make it easy to share information. So it's snippets of information and graphics that can be dropped into newsletters and to social media or emails and shared out with others. The landing page will also include information about signing up for focus groups and that information will become available in early April. We have a network of more than 50 organizations that have already signed up to share information about the survey or host paper surveys. It is critically important that our entire county be represented in this process. We have a population of more than 860,000 residents. And in order for us to really do the work of fostering health and wellness for all of our residents and enabling the conditions in which all of our residents can achieve their best health, it's important for everyone to be represented and to see themselves represented in the data that we collect. So I'm asking for all of us to both take the survey and to share it with others. Thank you.
Quick question. Thank you for presenting that. What has the response rate typically been? Do you have that data?
It varies. Looking at neighboring counties, it can be often around 1%, which feels relatively small. But remember that in Montgomery County, when we're talking about adult residents, we're talking about more than 5,000 people.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Any other questions, comments? All right, thank you for being here.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we have public comment. Just as a reminder for public comments, speakers may comment on matters that appear on today's agenda that the commissioners will consider at this meeting, listed in items F through J. All public comments must be relevant or germane to county business. So who do we have first for public comments? Ann Harrington?
As mentioned, my name is Ann Harrington. I've been in the borough of Norristown for many years and been concerned about a lot of things. Yesterday, there was a fire and that was brought up briefly, so I feel it's pertinent to what's going on. It's regard to the transportation center.
Is that, that's not relative to what's on?
Transportation.
We're not?
It's items on the agenda to be voted upon by this board.
So you can make that comment at the end, right?
Yes, in the general public comment.
Thank you. Thank you. Next up, Ed Moy.
Hello, and thanks again for allowing us to have this forum where as soon as the public can come forward and speak. Excuse me, my voice is a little rusty this morning. I was yelling at Tom last night at an event. He was really, really got on my nerves. But anyway, my name's Ed Moy. Excuse me, I'm from Western Arton. And I just want to say, the one item that I do want to speak on is the renewable energies. I just, I really think that it's not a good idea. I don't, I'm just against it. I think it's a waste of taxpayer money.
So I know Commissioner McKeever made comments. It's not on the agenda for this week. That was last week. So if you want to share it at the end?
Yes, in the generals.
Yes, that would be great. Thank you, Ed.
Good morning. I'm David Morgan from Ambler and I'd like to comment about item five in the agenda of the awards. The B is that the, a $2 million expense for Skidmore, Owens, and Merrill related to the Justice Center. So, last week, we had a million point three spent for relocating offices. This is more of the planning part so that the revised contract value, it says, is 29 million. And so, I, as a taxpayer, I know that I'm paying my tax bill for increases in the county taxes and we have had escalating increases. We've had 5%. Then it went to eight, and eight, and now 13. The last year, out of four years, 34% as acknowledged in a prior meeting. So, I'm really concerned that even the design part is getting up there and to put limits on it. I'm glad, I thank the commissioners for having the presentation by Mr. Jesse King about the ongoing project, Justice Center project and related projects. This is really quite interesting. If you look at the website, there are six dimensions to this, besides Justice Center and the county campus plan. We have courthouse renovation, Hancock Park, and then we have three for one Montgomery Plaza.
Mr. Morgan. Hi. What is your comment on the item that you identified on the agenda?
Well, I'm concerned that all costs are really carefully monitored and that way, we can have these amounts, I've noticed, controlled well. And then, another part of my comment is related to 18 through 20, and this is a planning commission cost. Now, if you look at our budget, on the capital budget, we've had increased, we've had high amounts in the planning commission. We have had 52 million 2023 and projected 63 million 2024, 72 million 2025, 65 million for planning commission. So, the planning commission rates here is 330 and one of those thousand, but how are we getting millions? Is it salaries in the planning commission? And just as Mr. King had a review of the Justice Center complex, I think that would be great to have a review of why, what is produced by the planning commission? This was raised in an earlier meeting, too. What's driving these high millions and millions of dollars of cost for planning commission? What is being produced? Is it only plans? Is it salaries? What are the products? Because it's with roads and bridges, it's with buildings. So, there's items from this direct agenda that I think should be addressed in more detail so we have lots of transparency. Thank you very much.
I, two things. One, I think it's a great idea to do some type of update, like we did the Justice Center with the planning commission. Some of those numbers are pass-through numbers, some of those numbers, as you mentioned, are related to roads and bridges and all that. But more importantly, going back to the Justice Center, I am overseeing and watching those numbers very closely. The first item that you referred to, what we approved last meeting, that was already part of the planned budget for relocation, so that's already in the original budget for the Justice Center. Correct me if I'm wrong, Lee, but that was already in there. And I've questioned the additional expenditures that you referred to, which are related to the project going longer than anticipated, but I can't get into details, but there are, there's a lot of investigations, probably not the right word, but there's a lot of oversight and there'll be different potential outcomes that will come later down the road. And I'm trying to talk around, but I'm going into specific details, which I unfortunately can't. Not that I'm hiding anything, but there's certain things that we can disclose at this point, I guess is what I'm saying. So I am very, I'm monitoring those costs very closely. So when I saw that on the agenda, that was one of my first questions in my briefing immediately and I got a full explanation. So, it is being, I'm watching, we're all watching it very closely. So, thank you.
On Zoom, we have Adrian Seltzer. Adrian, can you hear us? Go ahead, Adrian.
Hey, had to get my mouse and the unmute button together. Hi, Adrian Seltzer, Wynwood, Pennsylvania. I have an issue with the contract reward award for the district attorney's office for the facial recognition software. There are way too many issues with facial recognition and generally, it happens with people of color who are misidentified. And I don't think that is something proper for Montgomery County to be doing when this leads to people who are innocent being arrested and having them have tons of legal fees when it's the facial recognition software that was the issue. All you have to do is Google and the issues come up, even with this company. So I do think, do not think that we should be having a contract for facial recognition software use for the county. I also had an issue with Spotshot, which I don't know if that one went through, but we shouldn't be doing this.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
No, that's all.
Oh, that was it? Sorry. Commissioner DeBello was talking to me. Sorry.
I couldn't, I didn't hear what you-
No, it's the facial recognition. I'll pull that. All right, that's it for public comment. So next up, I'd like to put a motion on the table to approve the March 7, 2024 minutes of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner DeBello. Any board comment? All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Next up, resolutions. Number one, the establishment of the Montgomery County Food Policy Council. I'd like to invite Sam Applefield up to review this resolution.
Good morning, commissioners. Thanks for having me here today. Let's see, are you both pulling up my slides? I don't know if you have. Don't have them. Okay. Well, I'll talk through what I was going to talk through and get the slides to you afterwards, I guess. So yeah, just wanted to provide some brief background about this resolution to establish a food policy council. So I'll share a little information about why it's needed, what it could accomplish, and how it will be structured. So, I have a visual that, again, we'll share with you later, that shows there are lots of different offices and departments across the county that all affect the food system in some way, but there aren't very many processes in place to coordinate and kind of share information across these offices. So, for example, if we're looking just at food insecurity, you know, kind of one component of the food system, there are at least four different offices that have programs that affect food security. But we don't have a way to pull together, you know, the overall county investment, the overall impact that all of these programs have. So that's one thing that, you know, by creating the council, we'll be able to gather more data, better understand these issues, and then, you know, kind of better tailor our programs, our solutions that we're addressing. The council won't just be internally focused. You know, through the first few months that I've been in this role, I've been meeting with many different types of stakeholders, farmers, food pantry operators, compost businesses, foundations, universities. Thanks so much for pulling these up. I'm just on slide three, if you-
I'm just on three.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Thank you. So yeah, this is a list of some of the many stakeholders who I've been meeting with who are all really eager to kind of work collaboratively with the county to establish a vision for, you know, what we'd like to see happening within our local food system and, you know, how we're going to accomplish that. So, yeah, if you can go to the next slide, please. The overall kind of objective for the council would be to create a more equitable and sustainable food system and three ways in which we will accomplish that. One is, as I was mentioning, increasing coordination of county services and resources. Another is improving communication among food system stakeholders. And then, the third one is identifying and achieving some collective goals. So, I wanted to give a few examples of what the work of the council could look like. So if you wouldn't mind going to the next slide, please. These are just three examples that have come up from, you know, a number of the conversations and research that I've been doing so far. Establishing a farmer's market network, there are currently about 14 farmer's markets throughout the county. They're all basically, they all basically operate independently. So, you know, we don't have an idea of how many people visit farmer's markets over the course of a season in the county and what's the overall economic impact of these markets. So, by bringing together a network of market managers, we could, you know, have, again, have better data, we could set goals, and then strategies for how to achieve them, doing things like shared promotional campaigns for markets, things like that. An emergency food system, kind of data coordination system. Similarly, you know, there are two food banks, nearly 70 food pantries, a number of hot meal providers as well, but there isn't a way in which we can get a complete picture of how many people are accessing these programs and services, how much food is moving through the system, and are there kind of particular pain points, right, that we can try and address? So developing, you know, bringing all these players to the table through the Food Policy Council, we can really, again, better understand the issue and kind of tailor better solutions to it. And then lastly, increasing local food production, as Commissioner DeBello was talking about in his comments this morning. You know, the 2022 Ag Census data just came out and there are nearly 600 farms in Montgomery County, but only about 6% of them are growing vegetables. So there's a real opportunity there to really focus and increase the amount of, like, food that's actually being grown in the county and making that accessible to county residents. These are just a few of a number of examples of types of projects the council could take on. I think, you know, our challenge in the first year will be to identify kind of one priority, one focus area, and then, you know, kind of demonstrate our impact and success, and then we'll expand to additional areas from there. So, next slide, please. Just want to talk a little bit about the structure of how the council will be set up. So we'll have these kind of three tiers, three groups. The first is a leadership team, you know, provides the kind of overall vision, strategic guidance for the council and on the food system and the county in general. You know, that's the group that's going to do that prioritization and determine what our focus area will be. And once that's established, then we'll create a working group where we can bring more stakeholders to the table to do, you know, to really dig into research and developing recommendations on whatever that initial topic area is. And then, lastly, we'll have kind of a general membership for people who just kind of want to be involved, want to stay connected, really important way to share information and resources about the food system within the county. So, yeah, that's kind of the overall structure. Just quickly to say a little bit more about the leadership team, just go to the next slide. Structure of the leadership team will have 12 seats. Five of those will be for county seats from different departments. And then, the remaining seats, there'll be four kind of at-large, open to anyone, and then three specific stakeholder seats, just making sure those, you know, the agriculture, kind of community representation and food security, those perspectives are present on the council. So for those seven kind of non-county seats, we'll have an open application process that, you know, with your approval, we'll be ready to kind of launch that today. And, yeah, I guess actually just the next slide, my last slide, just a little bit of information about the timeline. So again, with your approval today, we can open that application. That will be open for about a month, for most of April. In May, I will kind of come back here and present to you a list of the candidates, a slate for the leadership team. And again, with that approval, then we can start the leadership team really up and meeting in June. So over the course of the summer, we'll do that kind of prioritization that I mentioned and then towards the fall, get the working group and kind of first general membership meeting up and running. So, yeah, that's about all that I have about the council. Really appreciate your time and consideration this morning and happy to take any questions that you might have.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution Number One as described by Mr. Sam Applefield. We're going to have you stay right there just for a second.
Yep.
Is there a second? Seconded by Commissioner Mckeja. So Juan, I want to just thank you for your leadership on this. I know you're new to the county, and anytime you come into a newly created role and you're trying to leverage your influence to really invoke change, it can have its challenges. So I think you've done a nice job over the last couple of months. And, you know, generally, everyone in Montgomery County should have access to healthy, safe, and affordable food choices. And I think this council will help collectively lend voices from the county, as well as our, you know, external stakeholders, to really help inform the work that we do. So really look forward to supporting this resolution. Any other comments?
Yeah, I would just say thank you. I think food insecurity is an increasing problem. And in a county like ours, we should really be able to marshal the resources to address that and eliminate hunger. And the Food Policy Council is an important step in that direction. And I'm surprised to hear, you know, of the 600 farms, only 6% grow vegetables. And I think that explains my diet. So I'm going to explain that one. Nobody caught that. But, yes. But, no, we need to do more to grow the right kind of produce that can, you know, help eliminate hunger.
Awesome. Anything?
I just want to mention that, you know, I met with Sam and some other people a few weeks ago. We went through a lot of the plans and all the documents that they have prepared, and we had really good conversations. I made some suggestions, and I appreciate that the suggestions were taken into consideration and, you know, set on a good direction of how we're moving forward. So I really appreciate that. Like I said, I want to commend everything that he's doing and the people that we... I can't remember everyone that we met with. It was... I apologize for that, but it was a really good meeting. And I look forward to seeing the recommendations that come back from this team. So thank you.
Great. All right, so we'll move on to a vote. All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Thank you for being here. All right, next up, authorization to submit an application to the Delaware Valley Regional Planning Commission for a Transportation and Community Development Initiative Grant. Matt Edman from our planning commission. How are you?
Good. Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for your time. The action before you is to pass a resolution of intent to be packaged with an impending grant application to, as you said, Commissioner Winder, to the Transportation and Community Development Initiative Program. So TC DI, I'll throw some acronyms at you really quickly. DVRPC has this program. It's been around for about 25 years. They open it every two years. It's $1.2 million to our region, the five PA counties. And it funds planning studies for transportation projects that have a community development bent to them that improve our quality of life. So Montgomery County Planning Commission staff have been working with Springfield and Cheltenham Townships on a potential application that would look at Cheltenham Avenue as far east as probably 309 Ogonts Avenue, but going as far west as Paper Mill Road, which is the end of Cheltenham Avenue. And going east to west, traffic drops off considerably after Easton Road. But it's something that was identified in a plan that our office did for Springfield late last year that looked at the Crescent Valley Trail and other pedestrian connections through the township and identified this portion of Cheltenham Avenue as a potential road diet. It only has about 8,000 cars. It's very wide. People live on it, and it's been an issue that Springfield Township's commissioners have identified for some time, and our planning staff have also identified as a traffic issue. Not in the sense that you can't get through there, but that it's... Cars go very fast. It's not safe, and something probably could be done there with PennDOT's blessing. So our office has been working with the two townships. We intend to apply to this TC DI program for a grant to study the feasibility of that. We have talked to PennDOT. PennDOT is supportive at this point. The best thing here is that the grant requires $0 in matching funds from the two townships of the county. So there's nothing to lose here by making the application. And I do want to stress that this resolution of intent is literally that. It just says in so much language that the county intends to apply and has the support of the county commissioners. This is not a selected grant. We do not have any money in hand. It still has to go through the regional selection process. So that is what we are asking for your consideration this morning, is to pass a resolution of intent that we can package with this grant application, which is due next week. Thank you. Any questions?
So I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution Number Two as described by Mr. Matt Edman. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner DeBello. Any board comment? Hearing? Hearing none. We'll move to a vote. All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Thanks, Matt, for being here. All right, next up, personnel. Kathryn Halen, our Chief Human Resource Officer.
Good morning, Commissioners. You should have in front of you the final copy of the Commissioners Department's personnel list. It is a three-page document dated March 19, 2024, with a timestamp of 3/35. All positions have been reviewed and accounted for and are presented for your consideration.
Great, thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve the March 21, 2024 Personnel Presentation as described by Ms. Kathryn Halen. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Mckeja. Any board comments? Hearing none. We'll move to a vote. All in favor? Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, I'd like to make a motion to approve advertisements of bids and RFPs for Montgomery County on Attached Exhibit A. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner DeBello. So I just want to make a quick comment on one of the items under Exhibit A. This week was Public Defender's Day, in which the county acknowledged the work that our public defenders are doing. And you may know that our Public Defender's Office is led by Christine Laura, and she's seeking a new case management system, which is a testament to our administration's commitment to social justice. Robust and data-driven case management software is the cornerstone of any public defender's office because it can assist in implementing client-centered advocacy. The software will not only maintain our high level of representation, but track inequities in the system, monitor staff caseloads to help improve quality of representation, and collaborate more efficiently and effectively with clients. The new system will also increase reminders of court appearances so that public defender clients are more likely to show up for court and streamline the process for sharing discovery materials. This administration is committed to increasing access to justice through the adequate and equitable funding of our Public Defender's Office. And I think this vote will be a significant step in furthering their mission. And so I want to thank Christine for raising this to us as an important piece of the puzzle and to all of our public defenders here in Montgomery County for the work that you do for our residents every day. Any other comments?
Yeah, I would just echo that and say that a number of leaders in the criminal justice space recommended that this would be a very helpful addition to help reduce some of the administrative workload and burden on the defenders who are already doing a tremendous amount of work in their representation, so.
Any additional comments? Okay. Hearing none. We'll move to a vote. All in favor? Aye.
Actually, can I comment on the other RFP real quick?
Oh, yeah, sure. So, well, can we mix that vote? So he can just make another comment? He wants to make another comment?
You can just make another comment.
Okay, just make another comment. So, motion carries, and then Commissioner Mckeja has a comment.
Got it, okay. So, approve all. I just want to say on the RFP on the Solicitors' Office for Legal Services, there's a number of issues that we brought up, and it says, including but not limited to a few areas of law in which we might need support. One area I would just add is HIPAA and data privacy. So HHS specifically mentioned that it's a complex area of law. And if we want to innovate and use data appropriately in the human services realm, that we could really use legal counsel on that subject. So I think it's important that we try to seek out any potential law firms that might have expertise on that that can provide some counsel.
Thank you for your comment. Next up, Item J, Awards of Contract, Montgomery County Exhibit B. I'd like to make a motion to approve the contracts, awards, amendments, and renewals for Montgomery County on Attached Exhibit B. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Mckeja. Any board comments? Hearing none. All in favor? Aye. You and I?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up, Awards of Contract, Southeast PA Regional Task Force Exhibit C. I'd like to make a motion to approve the contracts, awards, amendments, and renewals for Southeast PA Regional Task Force on Attached Exhibit C. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner DeBello. Any board comment? Hearing none. We'll move to a vote. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up, general public comment. And so for this public comment, go ahead.
I was just going to point out, we are having an election board meeting later. And if there are comments that pertain to the votes that are going to occur at that meeting, they should be made during the election board meeting.
During the election board. I was going to do it in the closing commissioner comments.
Oh, okay.
Does that work?
That's fine.
Okay. All right, so this public comment section must be relevant or germane to county business as well. So who's first?
Marlene Lasco. I guess I'm confused because I was after a couple of the others. But, so you want to only hear about the... Because I have a comment about Pride Month, and you only want to hear about that one, correct? Yeah, I also have a comment about the 24-hour that changed in...
That vote is going to occur at the election board meeting, which is after a salary.
Election board meeting, okay. Okay, so you just want the Pride Month meeting, okay. Second, okay. I made a Pride Month comment at a prior Board of Commissioners meeting, recommending that Monaco not be involved with any Pride Month activities, that doing such doesn't recognize or give credit to this country that is a society of immigrants. And there are so many cultures and types of people in this society that give a preference to one class is the same as us writing all the other classes with a message that you don't matter. My suggestion was not accepted by either the chair or a follow-on commenter. My ask today is to let us find a way for the community to weigh in on whether Monaco should or should not have support a month-long Pride Month recognition. Put a poll on the website, and she just talked about a survey, you know, the same type of activity. Put a poll out there that would ask voters whether they are in favor of a month-long pride recognition or whether we should recognize all types of cultures and people in this society by having a People's Month, recognizing all types of people with emphasis on the fact that we are all Americans who are free and brave. Thank you.
So I'm just going to say that we do a lot of work around diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging here in the county. And we are priding ourselves on celebrating our differences. And so as chair, as long as I'm chair, we'll continue to celebrate Pride Month. And so while I recognize the comments, I think when we look at nationally what our friends and neighbors from the LGBTQ+ community are facing, I have a responsibility, as a friend and as a neighbor, to recognize their plight and find ways to be allies and support them. And so, please don't boo, don't... And let me just say, our Commissioners Boardroom needs to be a safe place where people can share opinions, but I will not be booed in this board room. It's unprofessional and unacceptable.
What is out the recommendation?
You cannot yell out from your seat.
To put it on a website so that...
So I'm happy to talk about that. Can I respond?
Yeah, go for it.
So, to the idea that we do a poll. So we did a poll. It was last year's election. And many of us ran on the principle of protecting the rights and equality of people in the LGBT community. And we now represent a majority in this board. So at least a majority, if not unanimity. So I think it's really important to recognize that there's a reason it's Pride Month in that people in the LGBT community have been literally persecuted throughout history. And only in recent history have we made tremendous strides in equality. And it's because people have been proud and loud about the fact that they deserve to be treated equally. And we're going to stand by that, and we're going to celebrate proudly.
Next up.
Ed Moy.
Again, the issue about the EVs and things of that nature, I thought about it, and I still think that is incorrect. But I'm going to bring up another issue. The young lady who called in about the facial rec... Was that for the detectives?
It was for the DA's office.
The DA's office, excuse me.
The DA's office recommendation.
My question is why? If she's correcting the issue, or her problem is with spending money on that, why would they need that? And that's a rhetorical question, because of security. So if they want that for their security, why don't we have voter ID? I believe that's a security issue. For those of you who don't know me, excuse me, I'm retired from the Pennsylvania State Police. And when I encounter someone, or I pull someone over for a traffic stop or for any reason, I get called in for an issue, I have to identify the person that's there. I have to identify all parties. And if I can't identify you, then guess what? I'm taking you with me until we figure out who you are. So we're going to entrust this lack of a voter ID issue with whatever someone can just show up and say, "No, this is me. I'm John Jones." And there's my name, but I want to vote there. As a matter of fact, I've been told, thank you very much, that I favor Lawrence Fishburne. I could just show up and say, "Hey, I'm Lawrence Fishburne, the actor." So if they want that facial rec system, then why can't we have voter ID in that? And that leads me into, well, the whole drop box and the 24-hour issue. Is that going to be for the next...
Correct. For the election board.
Okay, well, that'll do it for now. Thank you very much again, guys. Keep eating the way you're eating, you're fine. Thanks, guys.
Next up, Ann Harrington.
Hi again, Ann Harrington. As a former member of a town watch group here in Norristown, which is in Montgomery County, and the fact that the Transportation Center is, what, a block and a half down the street, okay? And the county seat is right here in Norristown, which I'm proud of. I would like to actually mention again about a fire that I'd heard little of only because my grandson travels from the Upper Darby area up to Norristown on public transportation, okay? When he was getting ready to go home, that didn't happen. He had to call someone to give him a ride home, which was not a huge problem. He had to call someone to give him a ride home, which was not a huge problem. However, I believe the community needs to be made aware of these things when they happen. I found out through him. I Googled it, and lo and behold, it was there, but it was not on the news that I know of. Okay, it's important. I would like to see more surveillance down at the transportation center.
That's not in our per...
No, it's mentioning, it's a comment. I would like to see more concern over public safety, which I understand that's probably more a Norristown issue too, but we're all here. We're all in Norristown.
Sure.
So, as far as the news goes, I understand it's not your job to put it out there, but people need to know that things like this that happen do happen for safety reasons. They need to know. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. I too care about the Norristown community, this is home for me, and so we are partnering with our various stakeholders that are invested in Norristown, so we'll raise that as an issue.
Thank you. Next up, Pearl Flamberg. Pearl?
Hi, good morning. I live in Blue Bell, I work in Norristown, a block from the Erie Street Prison. I'd like to ask you to formally withdraw the previous commissioner's request to demolish the prison. It's becoming appreciated that the original front portion...
Could you, yeah, I'm sorry, you have to laugh louder.
Okay, I guess this is not...
Yeah, that's recording, I don't think that's actually projecting.
I'll start again. Good morning. I'm from Blue Bell. I work a block, I work in Norristown, a block from the Erie Street Prison. I'd like you to, I'd like to ask you to formally withdraw the previous commissioner's request to demolish the prison. It's becoming appreciated that the original front portion, not only the castle-like facade, but the warden's house behind it and the original prison cells, that those are architecturally significant and should be saved. The two portions added on behind those later are not so important. So last year's request to demolish the entire complex is no longer appropriate, and so could you please withdraw that request? Also, our state legislators would like to see a united front from all of you in order to access state funding, so if you could join together in a resolution that the prison building be saved and repurposed, that would be helpful. The Erie Street Prison Building could become a destination here in our county seat, bringing in visitors and benefiting our economy. It has adjacent parking, is a block from a US highway, is walking distance to public transit. It is one of the most recognizable buildings in Norristown. Let's make something interesting and useful out of it. Thank you.
So Pearl, Pearl is it?
Yep, so if we can let the friends of the prison know, we will have some updates in April, so on that, and we have had conversations with our state partners, and so I've personally talked to Greg Scott as well as Amanda Capoletti, so I know they're ready to avail themselves when the time is right, so we'll have some updates in April.
Yeah, that's what I was going to comment. We're, I'm personally, myself as well, is hoping that we're going to be able to do this sooner in April, to have this more in-depth conversation regarding that whole initiative on Erie Street, so let's see where we get in the next few weeks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, Sean Connolly.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Commissioners, Tom, nice to finally meet you face-to-face. You got my backing, so anyway, I'm a resident of Upper Province Township, my name is Sean Connolly. I'm here for a reason, has to do with deeds. At the last commissioner meeting, I believe her name was Jean Zorg, she's the...
Jeannie Zorg.
Jeannie Zorg. She's the recorder of deeds, she's also the mayor of Ambler. So I'm here today for a reason. My home was constructed under fraud, okay? The permit was not completed, the appraisal was whited out, the mortgage was falsified, and it was filed with the recorder of deeds. So the recorder of deeds is aware of this, I've been communicating with her, she's been on emails for probably several months, because the solicitor of my township actually resigned several weeks ago because of my investigation. I own a company or a website called TollBrothersFraud.com. I'm the gentleman that uncovered all the Stucko lawsuits and water intrusion cases around the country, starting in Pennsylvania, which is another reason why I'm here. Josh Shapiro used to sit in the seats that you used to sit in, okay? He made a backdoor deal with people in my municipality to sell off 200 acres that used to be owned by Montgomery County with Scott Rifkin. So I don't say this is an accusation, it's proof, and I actually have a copy of it, which I'm going to give you before I leave, Tom. And, you know, during the course of my investigation, it brought me into other areas. You know, there's actually a couple of people in this room, Ron Cool, he's a deputy sheriff, I worked here at the Sheriff's Department over 20 years ago. So I know about the corruption that goes on in Montgomery County more than anybody, and so does Ron, okay? You know, I did a national TV interview yesterday surrounding some of these things, including the court cases with conservative ships, UHS. This all has to do with deeds and the corruption in Montgomery County, and I know you're looking at her, and that's part of the problem, that you guys are trying to control public comments.
He can look at me.
No, absolutely can.
I actually wasn't.
Well, we were actually just watching your behavior in the back of the room, anybody can do anything.
Focus on your comments.
Absolutely.
Yeah, don't waste your time.
So a few months ago, I came down here, and actually Tom signed a letter to go observe the voting center down in Norristown. They sent down Robbie Robbins to come looking for him because I was asking questions about the network cables and SD cards. So I actually brought one of my friends with me, and actually several media and journalists are here. Leah Hoops is in the back right here, she's actually a whistleblower like I am, a federal witness, okay? She was the one that was involved with the election fraud in Delaware County that uncovered. She was suing Donald Trump, Rudy Giuliani, Leah Hoops, and Greg Stentstrom. So I've actually been helping them out in their matters, and along with other people.
Are you still talking about the deeds?
I am, I absolutely am. So how this comes to the deeds, Jamila, is that a lot of these developers are giving money to Josh Shapiro, including when he was county commissioner. He was taking money from Robert Toll, Bruce Toll, okay? Since my time's up, I just wanted to get that out there, and thank you for your comments. And actually, Tom, I'd like to give you a copy of my appraisal.
Do you want to...
Yeah, absolutely. So you guys actually have it on record, and you can't deny that it didn't exist?
Who's next? Michelle Emmerl.
Hi, good morning. Michelle Emmerl, Whitney Township. Thanks for being here this morning and trying to help everybody. I'm here on a really, really, it's making me sick to my stomach. A dear friend of mine works around at Einstein Hospital. Recently, there's been a run on women from South America, primarily Guatemala, coming in pregnant to give birth with nasty American men who are clearly their pimps.
Is this relative to county business? Because we don't manage Einstein.
Okay, well, it's county because it's happening in Montgomery County, and I'm just, I don't know where to go with this.
Yeah, okay, we can...
Yeah, yeah, okay. It's disgusting. These women are giving birth, these men are ripping them out of the hospitals, like barely, you know, done giving birth. There's, they've tried to follow up, the addresses are fake. I'm sick to my stomach, like what's happening with these babies when they're going home? Like, I'm sick to my stomach. Montgomery County, King of Prussia, is the second highest human trafficking hub in the nation. That's it, second to Las Vegas. Like, what's happening here? Like, I'm coming here because like, I just don't know what to do, and it's getting scary, and this is right here in Norristown.
Okay, so a couple of things. We can certainly raise this issue to Einstein Hospital, but more generally, we are talking to the Laurel House to get a sense of how bad human trafficking is in Montgomery County, and we're exploring potentially having them come to a commissioners' meeting to talk about it. We're just doing some work to better educate the public. So appreciate, that's a concern. I've watched a number of documentaries on this very topic, it's very disconcerting for our community. We'll figure out how do we get that information to Einstein.
Okay, yeah, like I said, it just like hit home when my girlfriend was crying to me. Like, what's happening with these babies after they get discharged and there's no follow-up because they're fake addresses?
Understood.
You know?
Yeah, I mean, look, we have a national epidemic going on with human trafficking, we have a national issue with illegals coming into this country, and I'm going to use the word illegals, I'm not going to say undocumented, unwelcome, or whatever the terminology is. They are coming into this country, hundreds, thousands a month. It's a national issue that we are being affected in Montgomery County. You're 100% right. I've asked and requested that we have a meeting, have Laurel House and Mission Kids, I've talked with them. Pennsylvania, not only Montgomery County, but Pennsylvania is probably the worst state in the United States with human trafficking. I was actually surprised myself, and I was like, why Pennsylvania? And then they said, well, you have to understand, because 80 and 81 go through Pennsylvania, and there's an intersection of those two, so you could be in and out of the state within hours. It's a huge problem that needs public awareness, it's a huge problem that needs, you know, the whole community needs to understand and see what's going on, and we all together have to fight this, because it's women, it's young men, it's kids, I mean, it's very involved, it's a multi-multi-billion-dollar global business, and Pennsylvania is right in the middle of it all. So yes, you're 100% right, and what's, if that's actually occurring at the hospital there, and I know the staff is doing everything they can to protect the individuals that come in there, so they need to be commended for what they're doing, but they're also limited as far as what they're able to do, but this is an issue that we need to be spotlighted. So thank you for coming back and bringing, and raising this issue again, so thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you for being here.
Appreciate it.
Next up, David Morgan.
David Morgan of Ambler. There was a recent decision to have electric cars added to the fleet of cars in the county, and I have concerns, because nothing is totally helpful for the environment. With electric car production, you have lithium and cobalt and lots of rare earths that are involved, and the cost to make them, environmental effects should be studied, I think, by the commissioners. I think we should also study the reliability. If our grid is functioning well, then they'll work fine, but suppose there's problems there? The effect on the roads if they're heavier cars by having batteries, the ones that go farther. I happen to have an electric car that only gets about 85 miles on a charge, and county driving's fine, but that's something that's considered in how it's charged, because if you charge it frequently, then battery life degrades, and if you power charge it, battery life degrades. So you want to have a drawdown, and then gradually number-two level charge, 240 volt charging, and then a power supply, pardon me, with turbines and solar arrays of those going on to supply the electricity. Birds can have a negative effect, either crashing into them or the heat from those, to be investigated. All these points I'd like you to investigate, because I'm not an authority, I'm just a person in the county who knows these things when I have had one. And then another thing is, an environmental concern I've heard lately is about the effect of abortion pills, and the fact that in our water supplies, that we can have the chemicals of the abortion pill and the human beings that are lost going through our water supply. So I think that should be looked at in terms of environment. I think that also to encourage rather than abortion, adoption, I don't hear it mentioned in the county much, except in November, but to prepare for November, how many people are being adopted each year in November? One thing I think, one time I think it was 500, but last I think they had it was two, maybe, Ms. Winder, Commissioner Winder, you can tell me more about that from the last time, I think you were there, so that we can encourage that life-giving opportunity that's not thought of. I didn't think about it much, but my wife brought it up in our family, and we adopted two girls from China, and it's been wonderful, and one was an EMT from that company, and that was a paramedic from that company that was here. So she's helping out America, and it's great to have adoption happen. So I'd like to just see if we can have those information out there and encourage it by November. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Joe Rooney.
And good morning, thank you for your time, I'll do the best I can, I've got a lot of things here. First off...
Can you state your name and municipality?
Joe Rooney, in Abington.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much for what you said. My disapproval was, I thought it was highly inappropriate for the board leader to put down and denigrate what is a legitimate concern of both that woman and many other people. And if someone comes up and brings an issue up, and you want to counteract them, whatever, they ought to have an opportunity then to have, enter into that form of discussion or whatever. So that's what that was about. The second one is, according to the general comment in the second, it says, "All public comments must be relevant or germane to county business." If this woman wanted to talk about the election issues now, this is the appropriate time to do it. She can also do it in public comment in the election board either, and I don't understand why we're asking the solicitor who's not voted or anything to comment or interact with people, it just is inappropriate. So that was what my problem was, what interchange with that wonderful comments of that lady. Real quickly, and I'm sorry those two folks just left, the Office of Public Health, I'm just curious, they're going to put out a survey, and in that survey, they're going to ask us all kinds of health questions, but in 2020, we heard an endless amount of information and recommendations from the public health that was wrong, that was, turned out to be wrong, okay, or it was ineffective. School shutdown's wrong, masks wrong, business shutdown's wrong, social distancing wrong, therapeutics wrong. In my line of business in aviation, when you got done something, if you had a problem, you've had a pretty effective review of what you did, what was right and what was wrong. There's no credibility with the public health, we can just gloss this over, but they're not, they don't have credibility, and that should be reviewed, why did we get wrong what we did? Souterton schools stayed open, Catholic schools stayed open, there was no difference. And yet all these recommendations were made by these same officials who are then going to recommend to do something else, that needs to be rescued. Second, I thought, the Food Policy Council, that sounds like the old five-year Soviet plans to me. I'm just curious, how many people in this room have ever grown chickens? How many people have ever grown turkeys? How many have ever taken care of an orchard? How many people know what a potato bug is or a squash tembora? Who are we to tell our farmers in Montgomery County to grow more vegetables? Have you ever grown vegetables? It's a rhetorical question. Have you ever tried to harvest them? Have you ever seen the labor that goes in? It's an amazing thing in America, we call it the free market. The free market determines what food's available based on what people want. If we have food insecurity, you know why we have it? Because diesel prices are too high, because energy costs with poor people are too high. Work at reducing the cost, don't increase county taxes by 33%, and give more people money in their pockets, and they can buy the food they need.
Your time is up.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And I just want to make a comment, and I'm not going to comment on everything, but saying that I denigrated what the woman said, that was not my intent, and my intent was to give clear perspective on my point of view relative to the comments, and I'm allowed to do that as a board member here. So I want this environment to be a respectful environment, where we can share disagreements, but as a board collectively, we do have the ability and opportunity to respond to comments. So I just want to clear that up. Next up for public comment.
Lance, I'm sorry, Weedy?
Good morning, commissioners. Lance Weatherly, resident of Jenkentown. My general comments are just related to transportation, human services within the county. I was encouraged to recently attend a Transportation Management Association event, and two of the commissioners here shared their vision on transportation for the county, and myself as a transportation engineer, really appreciate their vision to that. Commissioner DeBello, your focus on make bridges and roads, that is one of the most critical services the county can provide to their residents, and I appreciate your focus in that. Commissioner McKeja, you shared your vision on electrifying the fleet and other solutions for climate change, and I certainly support that. I think in Montgomery County, I think of my children and the future, their children and their future generations, and I think with this, we really need to make drastic measures. I have an electric car, gets 126 miles a gallon, I know all the charging solutions aren't figured out right now, but we've got to think about the future generations, what we're, how are we, whether the decisions we're doing now to be impacting 50, 100 years from now, not, is gas 20 cents more right now? Commissioner Winder, just wanted to say, great to hear you're engaging at higher levels of government for human services solutions, for affordable housing, homelessness, and gun violence, and just want to thank the commissioners for their leadership in Montgomery County for current and future generations. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, next up on Zoom, Natalie Seaman, Simon? Natalie?
Sorry, I had to unmute, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, great, I just had a brief general comment. I'm Natalie Simonetti from Telford. I just wanted to say thank you to... I just wanted to say thank you to Commissioner Mckeja for his comments at the last meeting about how climate change is affecting residents in the county locally. It's essential that people in charge be aware of and accept the reality of the dangers and expense of climate change. Regardless of whether people accept the facts of the science or not, we're all affected, and we will all be paying the price for not making the necessary changes to combat climate change in time. I'm very grateful that the county is being run by people who aren't science deniers. I thank you for your intelligence and wisdom in taking this issue seriously on my behalf and on that of my children and future generations. Thank you for everything you do. Have a great day.
Next up. Last on Zoom is Adrian Seltzer.
Hello. Yeah. Adrian Seltzer. I have, in order to log on to Zoom for a meeting, you have to have a Zoom account. And not everybody has a Zoom account or can afford a Zoom account. I know there's free, but not everybody is that tech savvy. So I think that it would be easier for people to join in if they didn't have to log in to their, they have to register, and then they have to log into their Zoom account before they can join the meeting. So I think you should look into that, if you would. Really sorry you voted for the facial recognition. I think it puts our county at risk for lawsuits for people that are incorrectly identified. And for the gentleman who said something about voter ID, I am a judge of elections. And there are various ways. People do not get in the book unless they're identified through the state of Pennsylvania. So if someone comes in and says they're someone else, I also can see their birth date. So someone who's 30 cannot come in and say they're someone who's 80. Our staff has been there for years. We know everybody. And new voters, people that are new to the precinct, also have to present ID before they can vote the first time. So voter ID is just a way to make it harder to vote. So knowledge is power. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. That's all. All right, so closing Commissioner comments. I have none, but I know that Commissioner DiBello was going to go over the Way to Go winners. So if you could do that for us.
Thank you. So this month, I have the honor of announcing our Way to Go winners, our Monco winners. We have one, two, five people identified. So let me just go through the list. I'm not sure if they're all here today or not, or if they... But so first off, I'm pre-hospital system coordinator, Tim Donegan. He's in public safety. Tim works in our EMS office and is responsible for licensing of ambulances in Montgomery County. He has been nominated because he is always polite and always available to those who need him. Is Tim here?
No, none of them are here.
None are here? Okay. Sorry about that. Next up is Patricia Kathleen. She is in the intake and ongoing office support in the Office of Children and Youth. Patricia is a team player, always on top of her deliveries. And she goes above and beyond to handle issues before they can become problems. Next up is Alicia Large. She's a social service advocate in our Public Defender's Office. Alicia works tirelessly to support each and every child she assists, even during long nights and even longer days. Alicia stops at nothing to seek opportunities for our clients. Next up is Maria, or I guess likes to be known as Rita Rosello. She's a district court clerk. Rita is such a kind and wonderful person. She is so generous and gracious with her time. Rita is always willing to stop with what she's doing and lend them a hand or ear. And lastly, Joseph Urini. He's a real estate specialist of Board of Assessment Appeals. Joe is a valuable member of the team with cheerful attitude and always happy to lend a hand to his coworkers by answering their questions. He has been with the county for almost 22 years. So congratulations to everyone who won this month, and thank you for everything that you're doing in Montgomery County and Austin County.
Great, thank you. We want to clap for that. Okay, so upcoming meeting dates, Election Board following this meeting at noon. Board of Commissioners meeting, next one is Thursday, April 4th at 10:00 a.m. And so I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the March 21st, 2024 meeting of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner DiBello. Any board comments?
Mckeja.
Did I say it wrong?
I seconded it.
Oh, Commissioner Mckeja, sorry. It's been a long, long meeting.
See, I eat my vegetables. You can tell the difference.
All right. No comments. All in favor? Aye, motion carries. All right, next up, Salary Board. Right. Is there any public comment? While Controller comes up, any public comment for Salary Board? All right, seeing none, we'll invite Catherine Halen up for Salary Board list presentation.
Good morning, members of the Salary Board. You should have in front of you a final copy of the Salary Board list. It is a three-page document dated March 19th, 2024, with a timestamp of 3:30 p.m. All positions have been reviewed and accounted for and are presented for the Salary Board's consideration.
Great. I'd like to make a motion to approve the March 21st, 2024 Salary Board presentation as given by Ms. Catherine Halen. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner DiBello. Any board comment? All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Next up, we have a, thank you. Next up, we have a retiree acknowledgement. Pam Howard.
Good morning, Commissioners and Salary Board members. Thank you so much for having me here today. It is a bittersweet moment to get to highlight to you what a really special person Tom Costello is, all the while preparing ourselves to bid a farewell as he moves on to the retirement chapter of his life. This is also an interesting experience because Tom is such a humble man. I am not convinced that he'll watch this, but hopefully his wife, sons, and grandchildren will. And they can glow in pride at all of the wonderful things said about him. I'm here to honor Tom's 25-year career working for Montgomery County, but he has been working for the mental health of the residents of our county for over two decades longer than that, in his days at Montgomery County Emergency Service and working as part of a family-based team in the Abington area. These days, we're all thinking a lot about recruitment and retention. And I'll tell you that I started to work at the county a year after Tom did. And it's not just the work that you do every day, but it's who you do it with. I had interacted with Tom prior to working for Montgomery County. And it was, you know, the way that he believed in what people could accomplish in their lives with the right supports that sparked my interest in joining the Montgomery County Office of Mental Health. And I know that that has helped to attract other staff as well. Tom's main role all of these years has been to assist in the planning and coordination of services that allow people to transition from state facilities and even our county jail to live a life in the community. The values that Tom brings to the work shown through from that first day I met him until now. Tom is a very soft-spoken man, which is interesting because his voice always gets heard. He listens and seeks to build understanding of what a person needs and then encourages all involved to think creatively about how the support for that person might be provided. Tom approaches each situation in a person-centered way. He's also respectful, understanding, and supportive of the work that our mental health providers do. He has built strong collaborative relationships with our state hospital and criminal justice partners. And he attends to the care and concern of family members for their loved ones. All of this has provided steady momentum forward toward a reality where people can receive the care and support they need to thrive in their communities. I wanted to be sure to get some input from beyond just myself or our team about Tom. And I asked some leaders in our provider community who have known him over many years for their thoughts. And I'm really glad I did because they noted that they appreciate Tom for always being a calming presence in their lives, always willing to listen to different views and perspectives respectfully. Tom can always articulate a greater hope or belief in an individual's recovery that is important for everyone to hear regularly. His advocacy for individuals and understanding of the complexities of treatment provided a valuable asset in their work with him. And they said in quotes, "We truly believe we are all better off for having known Tom and working with Tom over the past years. He has enriched our community and the lives of so many individuals in our county by being the person he is, an authentic, caring, and giving individual." They said, "Thank you for being in our lives and best luck with the future." Another provider said, "When there are challenging situations, he has always been there to answer a call or an email or brainstorm ideas." Many times, this has involved finding creative ways to get more support so someone can continue along their recovery journey and lessen the possible need for more restrictive setting. His hope and belief in recovery is contagious and contributes to how we operate our programs in Montgomery County. I have to say personally that Tom has been such an integral part of the mental health team at the county for the past 25 years. He has taught things to each and every one of us, not only in terms of technical knowledge, but in terms of kindness, hope, and valuing others. If it were not for that teaching, I would ask, how can we possibly do this work without him? But it is because of the values that he showed up with each and every day that the hope that he has inspired and all that he taught us will be his legacy. Tom, if by any chance you are watching this, it has been a pleasure and an honor to work with you, someone I have always admired for almost two and a half decades. We are very, very grateful you will be missed, and we wish you many happy and relaxing days ahead. And thank you so much for really letting me talk about what a great guy Tom Costello is.
Sounds like he's been a great asset to the county. So he will be missed, and thank you, Tom, for your service.
Thank you for coming up and speaking about him. It's so nice to hear what he's done in the county in 25 years and what he's done for the department. So thank you.
Great. All right, so I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the March 21st, 2024 meeting of the Montgomery County Salary Board. Is there a second? A second. Seconded by Controller Sanchez. Any board comment? All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Meeting adjourned. Election Board will be in about 10 minutes.
Board of Elections. I'll start by asking for any election board comments. Any general comments? Anything? Okay. That's a separate, that's the next, board member comments first. So I'll just start by saying we are just a month or so away from the Pennsylvania primary election. I want to encourage everyone who is not registered to vote to register to vote by April 8th is the deadline. And if you want to vote by mail, the deadline to apply for your mail-in ballot is April 16th, which is a Tuesday. Best way to do that is to go online at vote.p-a.gov where you can fill out a form and the information is sent to us, and our county Board of Elections will make sure you get a ballot. The first tranche of mail-in ballots are being sent hopefully next week, and so you should see those in mailboxes shortly thereafter. We have two motions today to discuss changes to polling locations and the operations of satellite offices. We'll introduce those shortly, but before we get to those, we'll start with public comment.
Well, I, so I have a comment, I don't know if I want to make, comment I want to make related to the second resolution that we're going, I believe, we're going to be talking about.
Do you want to just make it then?
No, I think that what I'm somewhat concerned about is that, you know, the election board was planned and we had an agenda, and then yesterday midday, there was a revised agenda which was with an addition of the second resolution. And I, you know, as a governing body, you know, sometimes I get that agenda has to be updated for certain reasons, but this is a change that, that I, right now on the surface, I don't support. And, you know, mainly I'm not supporting it because of how it came in in 24-hour period. It's a significant, I feel it's a significant change to operations. And it didn't give me the opportunity to go back and do a little bit of research related to what was previously approved and also what was previously agreed to prior years. And especially with all our meetings and everything that we do is extremely important, but with the 2024 election coming, we all know it's a huge election. We know there's a lot of tense, there's a lot of, you know, concerns, issues, and people are tense about what may or may not be happening in November. And when we do things like this, we only just add to that. It's like almost adding fuel to the fire. And I think we need to do better, and we just can't haphazardly make changes, especially this year with this election coming up without having, you know, detailed thought around it and understanding why we're doing what we're doing, and also giving election board members the opportunity to go back and do a little bit of research before we are in a position to vote on a change to the process.
Okay. Any comments?
I'll wait till.
Yeah, I can wait till later too. I will bring up, with that, I'll bring up our Director of Elections.
Public comment.
Oh, we'll go to public comment first, but I will just say I have confidence that the team thought out both of these resolutions, and I look forward to hearing more about them in a moment, but first we'll go to public comment.
Betsy Tatum.
Hi, so this is my first time doing this. So my name is Nancy, can you know, is this right? Is it all in the same?
Yes.
Yes, okay, great. So I just want to thank you for your positions and honor and respect and what you're conducting me. So thank you for that and decisions being put forth. So I want to say amen and agree with what Commissioner Tom had just stated. I have a background, master's degree, CPA accounting, so I do have a thorough background in checks and balances, and not doing things quickly and swiftly, that would be a detriment to the county and how we do process. So I thank you for that. So my question is, related to that, what is the due process? When you make decisions here on such sweeping changes, allowing the Montgomery County residents that your elected official time to, oh, there you go, the mic's on now, time to actually comment on it and put our positions on it, rather than just making decisions on behalf of the residents without the residents of the county actually being able to comment in that. So I would, I would like that to be answered. And then I would just make an overall comment for, to thank you in advance to uphold all checks and balances, and that the Board of Elections would continue to oversee and hold accountable the Director of Elections and the Chief Clerk authority, and all of that would be in place. And any substantial changes would have time for consideration for the county residents to review and research on our own, as again, you are paid positions and that you're working on behalf of the county residents. So, thank you, thank you.
Thanks. Yeah. I'm also just happy to share broadly, we have to publish a notice a day before. Agendas are changed.
On the agenda, yeah.
Agendas are changed all the time. I would often like them earlier, but many times there are circumstances, like changing a polling place. There was a fire in a polling place actually just, you know, yesterday. So things happen quickly where necessary, and I think this is the forum in which people provide comment before any decisions are made. So we hear all these comments and we're listening before we make a decision. Go ahead.
Next up, Michelle Mallore.
Hi, thanks again for letting me speak. Michelle Mallore, Whitpain Township. I'm calling about the 24-hour ballot boxes and wonder why we're going backwards with this. They were put forward for COVID. We're no longer in a state of COVID emergency. They, I ballot, I watched those boxes in previous elections. It's, the security is ridiculous. Even when security was at it, it was the equivalent of like minimum wage mall cop securities. There was like a party going on there with the watchers, and then they get to leave and take the keys with them. Like, stop, come on. Like, half the world is looking at us going, why do they need an election season? Why can't they do it in one day? And, you know, the other half of the world is kicked in the gut, you know, because we were always the beacon of like justice, and we're just not anymore. And these boxes just open Pennsylvania up to like fraud, which is why fact in the 2020 election, we had 220,000 more votes than we did registered voters. We just, we need, we need election integrity. We, it's awful. Like, I just, I can't, you know? Voter ID, like, that's not racist. It's like, how did we get that? I've never once seen a person buying liquor at a liquor store, and when they were asked for ID, I never once saw that person say to the cashier, that's racist that you're asking me for ID. Stop, like, stop. Like, this is the most fundamental right that we have, is to vote. Can we treat it with the integrity that it deserves? That's pretty much all I have to say. Like, I just feel like we're going backwards with 24, like, we're not in COVID anymore. Like, I just feel like we're going backwards with 24, like, we're not in COVID anymore. That's not what made America strong, like convenience. Like, that's not what made America strong. Our forefathers would be rolling, like, in their graves. That's, that's my thoughts. Thank you.
Thanks. Just on your comment, this idea that there were 220,000 more votes cast than people registered, if you have any information or evidence of that, please send it to me and the district attorney.
Will do, will do. Yep, yep, yep. Okay, thank you again.
Next up.
I don't, I just, I don't believe, we're not changing ballot box hours today, are we?
We can state the resolution when it comes up.
But I'm glad, that's not in the resolution. But anyway, I just want to be clear, I mean, is that, is that a?
That's not on the agenda.
That's not on the agenda.
Is there another comment?
Jill Lafferty.
Hi, everyone, thank you for having me. My name is Jill Lafferty, I'm from Blue Bell. I just wanted to come and say that during the swearing-in ceremony, someone had made a comment that they wanted to count every vote. That to me is extremely concerning because I ran for public office, I canvassed, I spoke to thousands of people on my way of canvassing, calling, sending emails, so on and so forth. I learned that there were many businesses that had voters attached to their businesses, which is illegal. I learned that doors that I knocked on that said that they had just voted, people didn't live there. I went to a nursing home that was a memory care facility that had over 250 votes, which were actually only 70 patients at the time. So it is very concerning to me. When you say count every vote, I believe we should count every legal vote. So our election integrity, obviously, there's something impaired. We are well done with COVID. We are done with it. We should go back to what we had before, no voting boxes. It only allows for more fraud. We should ask for voter ID. There's over 30 states that ask for voter ID. If you look at their statistics, there is no decline in their voting because of voter ID. If you ask people if they have an ID to vote, the majority of people will tell you, yes, we have an ID, or it's very easily to come about one. For our county to forego these things, to allow for voter boxes, to allow to not to ask for licenses, I work the polls every single time. People come in all the time with their license and they say, I'm here to vote. And I say, oh, you don't need your license. And they say, well, you know, it's the point of the matter. I want to make sure that I'm the one who's actually putting these votes in. There are cases where someone from a neighboring county close to me, a neighboring district, where the head of the election, she was handing in 20 ballots at a time. I spoke to people at ballot boxes that said, you know, it's great that people come and deliver their ballots, it's great that they're voting, however, we can't tell how many ballots they're handing in. My neighbor next door got four ballots mailed to her without even asking for it. There's something wrong with our system. We have to really tighten our leashes. Like Michelle had said, it is our rights. We are constantly talking about rights. We're talking about women's rights, we're talking about LGBTQ rights. What about our rights as citizens here? What, our right is to have a legal and valid voting system. And here in Montgomery County, it is very corrupt. So I'm asking you to please tighten your leashes, to please make sure the ballot boxes are out, to please make sure that the voter ID is in. We really need to carry forward with this. Once again, I thank you very much for your time. I thank you very much for your service. I know it's not an easy job, so thank you.
David Morgan Bamber. I don't give or give a check into a box, a mailbox or anything like that. I give it to the post office clerk. I don't know if people are going to tamper with those boxes. That's been a kind of fraud that's happened and financial fraud. So I'm concerned that that be checked out. If there is 24 hours, well, why would it have to be, if that's the case, but someone's work schedule is 12-hour days, so it's still how they could have days off that would be able, in a certain zone of time, be able to vote. Then also, I really appreciate Mr. DiBello wanting to know major issues that require a lot of thought, having enough notice to really consider them, consider the ramifications rather than quickly, I know he's been busy with lots of things. So I think that's a major point to consider, maybe defer something that's really major until we have some time yet. Okay.
Next up, Ed Moy.
To continue on this, excuse me, voter ID issue, the gentleman who called in after I spoke, he mentioned something about knowing everyone who comes to their polling places and checking their birthdays. Give me 10 minutes, I'll have the three of you guys' birthdays online. Come on. And as far as knowing everyone in your town, how many times have you seen in the news someone, someone commits a heinous crime, kills someone in a neighborhood or family member and the neighbor's saying, he was so quiet. He just said hello to me every morning. So give me a break with that, number one. Number two, I grew up in Philadelphia, I went through the Philadelphia school system. I like to say I escaped from, after going through that school system. My father passed away when I was four years old, I have seven brothers and sisters. The fact that we, we have to hold people by the hand in order to get them, to help them vote or whatever, it's embarrassing to me, especially as a black person. They always say, well, minorities can't afford the internet or they, or they can't afford IDs. When I first heard that, that was embarrassing, that totally embarrassed me. I'm, I'm 16, 17 years old and growing up in Philadelphia and everyone, my mom and all the older folks in my neighborhood was like, you've got to get some kind of ID. If you get stopped by the police, they won't know who you are, you have to have ID.
There's just one thing I want to clarify is that we don't regulate voter ID requirements. That's, that's the state legislature.
Perfect, wonderful. I can, I can be wrong here. I've, I've never lost a mill because I was wrong about an issue. But getting, getting back to that, for me, again, being retired from the Pennsylvania State Police, Ed Moy from West Norrington, it's a security issue. If you think about it, the, well, it's a fact that the number one duty of any, any nation's government is to keep the people safe. That is a security issue when you don't know who people are, especially what's going on today, coming through our borders and especially in the South and the North. So as far as that goes, I'll leave it there, but I just want to say, we as Americans, we ought to go back to taking personal responsibility. Like I said, I graduated high school at 17, I packed my bags, I said, Mom, I can't, I can't become a man in your house, I got to get out of here. I got to go. We have to step up and start taking personal responsibility again. And words from one of our, our governors named Ed Rendell, he wrote a book called, We Become a Nation of Wussies. Thank you very much.
Hello, everyone, I'm born and raised Norristonian, Daniel Wizard from Norristown. We need voter ID, period. If you can buy alcohol, cigarettes, whatever, there's nothing racist about that. And my father served for this country, a Vietnam vet. And it's, he's getting spit on his grave by these illegals getting poured in his country. I think it's ridiculous. And I've worked the polls years, through all the weather, born and raised, and it's ridiculous because, you know, how many people have come to our polls and said, are we at the right polls? No, they get sent away to vote somewhere else. They've voted multiple times and multiple places. That's why we need voter ID. This is United States of America, not United States of illegal immigration, period.
Thank you. So just want to say again, there's no instance in Montgomery County of anyone voting who was not supposed to vote. And if anyone has any evidence of that, it can be investigated and prosecuted. Next comment?
Jim Mollick.
Jim Mollick, Worcester. This is my third time here about election integrity, okay? And I posed questions to you guys and you got me answers from, I guess, your solicitor. And the three things I broke it down to were signature verification, purging deceased voters off the rolls, and purging voters who moved out of state or out of the county. And the response I got, it's really kind of concerning because you guys don't do signature verification. You don't. Don't compare. Could be anybody's signature on there, but you guys don't do it. What you do do is look for the signature and the date, and if they're not there, then you can avoid the ballot, right? What about somebody's false signature? I mean, why bother? Why bother? If you're not going to look for the signature, why even, why bother? I'd like to propose to you guys that you develop a policy that deals with voter, the verification. Verify the signatures, if there's a discrepancy, contact the voter and see whether or not they actually sent the ballot in. That's not nullifying anything, that's actually doing your due diligence. So develop a policy that works within the rules and the law, which would be notifying the voter that there's a discrepancy in the signature and you figure out how to rectify it. That's, that's one way to go. Regarding purging of the voter rolls, when somebody passes away, you guys got three things that maybe or maybe not happen. Department of Health notification, receipt of a death certificate, and receipt of an obituary. Well, who's responsible for sending that stuff in? Is it required? Is it optional? Who's in charge? How often is it looked at? Is there a report that deals with all of that information and do you guys get to see it? Can we see it? I'd love to see how many times, how many people you purged off the rolls who are deceased. I'd love to see it on a monthly basis or a yearly basis. The third thing really concerns me regarding the people who moved out of state. The only protection we've got is any profile without activity for five years gets a five-year notice and the voter's profile is marked inactive. I gave you an example, two people I knew who moved out of state two, three years ago and they're still on the rolls. They could come back here and vote. How are you going to know? You're not going to know. You have no policy, procedure, protocol to deal with any of that stuff. So, you know, you got to develop some kind of a plan to deal with voter integrity because a fraudulent vote takes my vote out of the equation. Can't have that. And I find it hard to believe nobody, there hasn't been any voter fraud in this county. How you can look at me, how you can look at me with a straight face and tell me, and tell me that there's no voter fraud.
You're out of time, you're out of time.
All right.
Let me just take this one step by, step by step. If you have the evidence, please bring it.
Well, I did, I did some.
The evidence of someone actually voting who was not supposed to vote, that's very different than a voter roll, and I'll tell you why. So first of all, in the voter rolls, over a million people have been taken off the rolls in recent years in Pennsylvania. They are called all the time, regularly, periodically, according to the state statutes. We don't control those, but they are functioning. The second thing that you know is, you can talk about someone who's moved, but people who move, if it's for a temporary purpose, still have the right to vote in Pennsylvania. For example, if you're a student, if you're a student, depends. There's, there's multiple reasons why you might legally maintain your home domicile in Pennsylvania and, and still be able to vote absentee. Military is, you know, an obvious one. So, you know, you can't, you don't know by itself whether someone's living there, whether they're eligible or not. The second thing I would just say is, we have a record, a public record, of who voted and who didn't after every election. So if there's any question, we can go back, and we actually do go back, usually in one sense, to reward people for having voted a lot. So, which we'll do, you should apply for the Voter Hall of Fame. But, but those are some of the clear measures that we have to secure and make sure that the vote is valid. So, is there another comment?
Jean White.
Jean White, Montgomery. As a Monco taxpayer, I've been trying to evaluate whether PA 25, PS 1901 is being followed for Monco voter roll maintenance. One is their transparency to the taxpayers on Monco's voter roll maintenance. Two, does a standard operating procedure exist? Three, can taxpayers verify, one, that the USPS NCO database matches all those voters who qualify for ERIC removal letters, receive an ERIC letter? Can we review the results returned and view the actions taken? After submitting several write-to-knows, I have ascertained, one, there is no standard operating procedure because I wasn't given one. Two, there are two removal dates. There's an annual ERIC letter that goes out to voters if they exist on the USPS Name Change of Address database. And there's also a five-year ERIC letter sent to inactive voters. The next date will be January 2028. I obtained five different ERIC form letters. I also, Voter Services wrote to me, quote, "There's no report we can run in our system that tracks who receives these letters. I can tell you that our ERIC letters were sent out on June 21st, 2023, and the five-year notices on January 4th, 2023. All these programs are run annually," end quote. I received the following 2023 ERIC report. The total count of ERIC letters sent was 9,483 versus 21,550 that were eligible, which is a 56% deficit. Let me repeat, this ERIC process did not send 12,667 eligible ERIC letters or an overall 56 deficit to voters who qualified for receiving this communication. I also was told there's no letters for viewing or a file for which these categories the taxpayers can review, can view as required under statute 1901. In summary, it's clear that the Monco taxpayer transparency is seriously lacking because you can't view the NOCD, NCO database, the ERIC letters sent against that database, the returned ERIC responses and actions taken by Voter Services. Until these processes are incorporated, Monco has not provided a complete taxpayer transparency as a check and balance of power as afforded to citizens as designated in the US and Pennsylvania constitutions. I send each of you an email summarizing my endeavors. Can you comment on how you would improve the taxpayer's lack of transparency on an important voter role maintenance since who gets into office is hinged on how we clean, the Monco voter rolls are kept under the stewardship of Voter Services?
Good job. Yeah, so please, it sounds like you have that in writing, please, you know, send it to us.
Yeah, I sent it to you. And I have the USPS NCO database, so that's what my data is coming from.
Okay, thank you. As I said, voter roll maintenance is determined by the state, but we'll, we'll provide you some feedback. Got it.
Marlene Laska.
Marlene Laska, Upper Providence Township. Okay, at the 7th of March, BRC meeting, I commented about two proposals to restore, restore people's confidence in their elections. And Neil, you commented that there was no fraud. With all due respect, prove it. We are part of the 68% who are not confident in the 2020 election results. There is a glaring error in the Pennsylvania Department of State report of the 2020 general election. There are no tables with the number of game day voters. Table three provides a full count of those voters who actually voted, but no table for the number of voters from each county that voted on Election Day. Apparently, the state thinks that we get game day votes by subtracting absentee mail ins and provisionals from the total, but that is not how reconciliation works. Section 3031.13 of the Pennsylvania Election Code defines reconciliation, which is comparing physical paper ballots to those canceling votes by all methods, game day, absentee, mail ins, and provisionals, and ensuring those numbers match. So to reconcile, we need the game day votes as input. There are other discrepancies in the state numbers. I don't have the time probably to go through. The one, the last one is there are national unexplained discrepancies for 20, for the 2020. Supposedly, Trump got 74 million votes and Biden got 80. Supposedly, Trump got 74 million votes and Biden got 81 million. A quick addition equals 155 million. But one source says 2020 only had 133 millions nationwide registered voters. 22 million more votes and voter discrepancy. Okay. The above is why we have a current crisis in confidence. We don't have key data to allow us to reconcile the numbers. Also, overall in Pennsylvania for 2020, we were, we have been told there were over 7 million physical paper ballots, but only 6.9 million voters. Again, Pennsylvania has yet to reconcile this more than, more ballots than voters discrepancy. We, the people, want to know how Monco Board of Elections, okay, I'm out. The question is, you know, how is Monco Board of Elections going to restore the confidence? Also, we did present a, for LNA testing, and we have not gotten any notification of the testing being done. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Good job. I can't respond to everything, but just, you had asked me to prove that there's no voter fraud. It reminded me of Commissioner Winder's son, who's three years old, who doesn't want to sleep in his room because there's monsters in there. And unfortunately, we can't prove there's no monsters in there. So it's the problem with disproving a negative, right? You can ask us to say something's not there, but we can show you all the data, we can show you all the voter records, but that's it. That's what we can do. And we perform multiple audits. I think Commissioner DiBella would probably say there's not millions of votes in Pennsylvania that were not accounted for.
Well, I don't think she was referring to Pennsylvania.
I think she said millions of votes in Pennsylvania.
Yeah, in Pennsylvania, yes. 22 million, supposed.
I'm, you know, I'm not commenting on the 2020 election. I'm focused on 2024. I think there's a lot of discrepancies, there's a lot of concerns and issues that some will be brought forward to 2020. From 2020, my main goal and objective is to, as I've said from day one, getting elected, that when I stand in front of the people at some point, late November, early December, that we certify the 2024 election, I want to be, I want to be able to do it with confidence. But I will comment on the fact that I wouldn't necessarily say that no fraud has occurred in Montgomery County. There have been people in the past that have been arrested for fraud in Montgomery County. So let's not, let's not say that never, there's never been fraud. And every county, every jurisdiction, there's fraud somewhere along the line. It happens. The system is not perfect. It's far from perfect. It will never be perfect because there are people that move, and as long as they don't change their current address, they're still voting in the municipality that they used to live in, not the municipality they moved to. There's been issues identified within the ERIC system. There's been states that have been, that have pulled out of the ERIC system for whatever reasons, and the more states that pull out of the ERIC system make the ERIC system less valuable to the states that are using it because the main point is to identify voters across state, like, you know, where they're at basically from the state perspective. So that's a very unfortunate, that states have pulled out of the ERIC system because I think long-term, it could have been beneficial, but it's not going to be beneficial because of the states that pulled out. We also know that there's been, there could be issues where college students have, could vote where they live and vote at the campus that they're living at because there's not a good system in place to ensure that they're not voting twice. I'm not saying they are, I'm just saying that there is not a system to disprove that they're not voting twice. It can happen. And I do want to find out more detail around election voter ID. And it pains me when I hear, and I agree with Mr. Moy, that voter ID is racist in some fashion. I mean, the list is long, everything that requires some type of ID. For us to sit here in 2024, to sit there and say that a voter ID prevents somebody from voting. I mean, let's be real. I mean, voter ID.
Voter ID is not an issue before us, so.
Oh, I understand that, but I'm just referring to people that comments, you know, you asked questions, so I'm referring.
Just on the direct issue.
But I do want to know what we can, as a county, if there's anything that we can do to put some type of voter ID in place. The other thing with signature verification, if I remember correctly, it was either, I think it was in 2020 that the state Supreme Court ruled that signature verification isn't required as, verifying people are voting. I believe that was 2020. Was that 20, was it 2020?
Federal and state courts.
Yeah.
Ruled that we're not permitted.
Right. So that's outside of our, I mean, I agree that, you know, but it's not something that we could enforce because we're not allowed to. And so there's, there will always be, every election that's held globally, there's always issues, and what we need to do is try to eliminate and build confidence back into our communities that we're doing everything possible to ensure every legal vote is counted.
Right.
And I just want to say, I think there's also a difference between, like, opinions, right, and questioning integrity and the processes that we're working to put in place to ensure that we have election integrity. And I can tell you that this collective board is focusing on doing just that and partnering with our Director of Voter Services to ensure that he has the tools and resources to avail himself to, to be, to deliver, you know, on our elections. And so that we may not agree from an opinion perspective on, like, what's the best decision, but this board cares about, like, integrity, right, and doing the right, right thing. And so I just want to stress that, just from getting to know this team.
Got it.
Joe Rooney.
Okay, Joe Rooney, I live in Abington, and thanks for giving me the opportunity right here. First, and I don't want to upset any apple carts, but from my experience, I have had great help from Voter Services. And I'm afraid to mention anybody's name. I don't want them associated with me because they might get in trouble with you all, okay? Nonetheless, Matt Massicura left and went to Minnesota, and he has been, I don't know if he was a Republican or a Democrat, he did a great job, and I wrote him up. And there are other people in there right now that helped me from Abington, and I get prompt service, I get help. If I'm screwed up, they tell me I'm screwed up. If they make a mistake, they say, oh, we made a mistake about that. Just very professional, and I appreciate all that. Okay, moving on from that. Now, Neil, when you had your speech in MCC, you said, "I want every vote counted." That made me really concerned because it should have been every legal vote counted because there are legal votes, there are legal votes that need to be counted, and there are not legal votes that can't be counted. And I just wanted to make that, that case right there.
I would just, let me just add, that's assumed.
Okay, time.
You can pause the time. That is assumed. That is assumed.
You can't make that assumption, okay? Now, I don't know how long you've been here, okay? But if you've knocked on doors in Montgomery County, there is a whole lot of discrepancy between the street lists and what ends up having to be somebody living in a house. And especially in Lansdale, areas where there's high turnover, high rentals, there's all kinds of names on houses that haven't lived there in years, okay? So we got to be very careful about that, and I'm just bringing that up because you brought it up at the swearing in. So what are the hours for the mail-in boxes, first off? Second, we shouldn't have, or the drop boxes, excuse me, we shouldn't have drop boxes. Anybody here ever heard of porch pirates?
Yeah.
Internet is full of porch pirates, okay? I don't know how many drop boxes we have, but that's a threat to everybody. Anything that's left somewhere marginally secure with a Zoom or anything is a threat, and you all ought to be concerned about that. We don't have any say in signatures, in voter ID? Nonsense! You are three of the most important people in Pennsylvania right now. Imagine the strong statement coming from Montgomery County commissioners where they unite to protect our ballots, and they say, "We think it's important to have signature verification. We think it's important to have voter ID." You may not have the effect from the Montgomery County down, but you sure have an impressive effect going up. And surely you all are concerned about legal ballots and securing our vote because you just said it. I can't imagine you aren't united about voter ID. Now, the next one. Okay, would you mind taking out your pen? I just want you to say this. You want proof of vote, of false votes? 157 Tennis Avenue in North Hills. November election in 2020 and the primary election in '21. I turned it in. I got gaffed off in every place. I don't have time right now, but you write it down. You want it? You can't say that anymore, okay? You want proof? I have more proof. You want to talk about the pandemonium that was at the Willow Grove Annex in the November of 2020? I had no idea what was going on. My wife's a judge of elections. She wanted to go vote early. It was crazy there. Bring Josh Stein in here. He doesn't work for you all now. I talked with Josh. I know him. I showed him people dropping two votes off in the, in the drop box. I took pictures of it. I took pictures of Democrat-paid operatives that were walking in and out of the annex, coming out and talking and giving bad information to voters out there, okay? If you want it, I'll give it to you. I don't think you do, but you can no longer say, "I have no evidence of it." 157 Tennis Avenue, North Hills, okay? There, you asked for it. I'll give it to you. I can give you more, too.
Anyone who has any issues, please.
I brought them up already, and nothing happened.
In a previous year, but anything you have, and.
We can only talk about fraud from previous years. We're all concerned about the 2024 election, but you ask about, it has to be a previous election.
We will gladly look into every previous election. Frank has written down the.
And Voter Services, thank you for the good work those people do.
Got it. Next comment.
Okay, we're moving into Zoom. Adrian Seltzer. Adrian, can you hear us?
Wait a minute. I had too many screens open. Yes, I wanted to, first of all, speak about the, for two seconds, the misinformation that has been brought forth by speakers today. But, you know, that's part of the problem. It's the misinformation that creates the voter, the lack of voter confidence. I wanted to talk about the satellite offices, and I was hoping that they would be open a little more. There would be longer periods, and also, they would be open the week, the Sunday before the election for it to be convenient for anyone that needs to cure their ballot to come in and do that. So I'm hoping you all add a couple, you know, at least another Sunday. I like that there are Sundays because, because the fact that the primary is on Passover, which is a Jewish holiday, it's the first day, and there will be more people doing mail-in ballots because they won't be able to come out to vote on that day. So having those extra Sundays there. I was also hoping that you could actually promote this a little more. The satellite offices are not well-promoted, and maybe even going so far as to reach out to community centers, churches, synagogues, et cetera, to do something like souls to the polls on those Sundays. So, couple ideas, and hope you can expand those hours a bit. Thank you.
Thank you. And just to clarify, we're going to have a vote on the second resolution, which addresses some of the issues you're talking about, given that the election was scheduled by the state legislature on Passover. We are going to adjust polling places, many of which are in synagogues, and then extend hours and operations for satellite offices.
Okay. I forgot one thing, I'm sorry. Commissioner DiBella, if you would like to talk about the previous voter ID law, I am quite first on that, and I would love to have a conversation with you.
Okay, thanks. Thanks, Kelly.
Next up, Natalie Simonetti.
Hi, Natalie Simonetti from Telford. I noticed that there are a few election deniers there today. I'm guessing that they're, well, we already know now that there've been a few speakers, they're there to insist that our elections are rigged and that mail ballots are unconstitutional and fraudulent. There was a propaganda film put out last year called 2,000 Mules that made outlandish and easily debunkable claims about mail-in vote fraud. Now, people keep saying we need to restore confidence in our elections, but the only reason we have, that people have lost confidence in the elections is because they believe that, they believe the lies that are being told by people who are trying to convince them of that and, in most cases, you know, just take their money, like the woman who was there before who has a book for sale on Amazon. Okay. Now, personally, my main concern about the 2024 election is making sure that we have safeguards in place to protect our election workers from threats, intimidation, and violence from these people. A quote widely attributed to Voltaire goes, "Those who can make you believe absurdities can make you commit atrocities." If people are brainwashed into believing the only way to save the country is by doing something to interfere with voting, that's incredibly, bone-chillingly frightening, and we should all be highly aware of that. All right, as far as discrepancies in the numbers, okay. For example, let's look at the claim Doug Mastriano made about number discrepancies. Now, I found, okay, the quote from Bill Barr. This is Bill Barr talking, giving his testimony to the January 6th committee about this subject. He's talking about a conversation that he had with Bill McSwain. Now, Bill McSwain ran for governor in the Republican primary last time, I believe. So this is not, you know, this is not a liberal person. Anyway, the quote goes, "Video of former Attorney General Bill Barr was played before the committee where he discussed a phone call with former U.S. Attorney for Philadelphia, Bill McSwain." Quote, "He got back to me and he said, 'No, the problem is that Mastriano threw out this number, and what he did was, he compared apples to oranges. He took the number of applications for absentee ballots for the Republican primary, and he compared it to the number of absentee votes cast in the general election. But once you go and look and you compare apples to apples, there's no discrepancy.'" This is, this was said by Bill Barr about what Bill McSwain said to him about Mastriano's claim. Yeah, I mean, there's also, oh, about the 2,000 mules? That's already been debunked. Anybody can find information about that. True the Vote, there's an article out there from just a month ago saying that True the Vote has no evidence to back up its claims about widespread systemic.
Yep. Thank you for your comment.
Okay. Shannon Mayne.
Hello, thank you. I'm Shannon Mayne from Tompkins Township. My first comment quickly is about the satellite offices. In our township, our school district recently had a special election, and there were some satellite offices that were open certain hours. I just received the write-to-know request back from the school district, and it did have them talking about the hours of these satellite offices being open. But for weeks leading up to the election in January, I did try to find somewhere where the satellite offices were located and what times and dates they would be open. So if we are going to have these satellite offices open different hours, if we can please post them somewhere, share them, just so everybody knows about the times that they're open. Thank you. My second comment is, because I am a Tompkins resident, I'm going to talk about the Tompkins Supervisor race. The race is currently under review by the Commonwealth Court with a hearing scheduled for April 4th. So I'm just curious to know about the basis or rationale behind the board behind the Board of Elections' involvement in this case and their request to lift a stay that was already ruled by a judge. Shouldn't the Board of Elections remain neutral in this matter that's involving two Tompkins citizens vying for office? Why is the Board of Elections taking sides at all on this case when there is a hearing set for April 4? Can anybody answer that question for me? And that's all I have. Thank you.
I couldn't fully hear your question, but I don't think it's that we're taking sides. I think, go ahead if you want to.
John, do you want to explain where that is, the status?
Yeah. Currently in front of the Commonwealth Court. There's argument on April 4. We are a necessary party to that action. Our interest, as is always, our interest is to come to the conclusion of elections and election contests as quickly as we possibly can. When it is legally appropriate to do so. There was a stay that had been put in place by the Commonwealth Court awaiting the results of a Third Circuit Federal Court case. And the Third Circuit Federal Court case really has no bearing on the outcome of the election contest. Our interest here is to get a resolution of that contest as quickly as possible so we get a legitimate candidate in the office as we should.
Okay. So you may not have heard it, but our solicitor says that our interest in the case is to simply seek a resolution as quickly as possible.
What role are we performing?
This board certified that election. And so because of that, there is an issue, there is a challenge, in a sense, to that certification because there's an election challenge.
Again, actually, we are one of the parties. This is an election contest. The candidate who is currently marked as losing filed suit against the board to contest the election. The third party here is the candidate who's currently seated, who filed a motion to intervene with the court and was allowed to enter. So this is really a matter that's between the county Board of Elections and the candidate who's currently the losing candidate in the election.
So the position we're taking is we're basically providing the results of what was certified last year?
That's correct, that we followed the law at the time of the certification, and the election was properly certified. That's our position. Yeah, that is our position.
Yeah, I'm just trying to understand the position we're, yeah, okay.
Okay. Do we have any other comments?
Yes, the last person is Tony Patrick.
Tony Patrick?
Yeah. Hello, Tony Patrick here in Upper Providence Township. And I want to, it just came to light to me about this Monaco Moving Forward Group. And I see that Tom DiBella is not a member, part of it. And I'm looking at the Voting Rights and Election Integrity Advisory Committee. And it just says that these people are experts in the Voting Rights and Election Integrity Advisory Committee. And I want to know, how did they become experts? Who vetted these people? How does the public get access to being on that board? When was it created? And are these all just left-sided people, not right-sided? And going back to knocking on doors, I did it. And yes, I've come across a lot of people who were not even living in the house. And they voted multiple times, but they're not even the resident of that house. I had created affidavits, and that were sent into the board, and not one response came back from you guys. Another thing was, I worked at a precinct where the judge of elections, someone was, a couple always comes in and turns in their mail-in ballots so they could vote there. The judge of elections refused to open the envelopes and write spoiled on that. I had told her, "You have to do this." And she says, "Nothing's wrong. These are perfectly perfect ballots." And I said, "That's correct, and that's why there's cheating going on. So don't tell me that there's no cheating on our elections. There are in multiple ways." And one, I want these boxes removed. It's unconstitutional. And if, just like when you get your driver's license renewal, you get a card from the Department of State, Department of Transportation, why don't we do something where we send out a notice to every single registered legal person, voter? And when they come to election, they turn that card in so that they could vote? It's just like when our Pennsylvania Lottery, everybody knows who wins that night on that lottery, where that ticket was sold. We should have an access to that. And stop using these Dominion machines. They are created by foreign companies. They are not made in America. That means there is foreign interference in our elections. Thank you very much for what you're doing. I just want Tom on this Monaco Moving Forward website. It's upsetting that we have three of you guys. And one more thing. Why don't one of you take shifts and go down to the clearinghouse and oversee everything that's going on down there? Want to, you know, like, take a four-hour window for each of you and cross-examine what's going on down at the clearinghouse when these votes are being, when they're shipped in?
Thank you. Thank you for your comment.
Is that it? Okay. Just answering your question on the Moving Monaco Forward, that is not a county initiative that was started before the election, actually. So it's a volunteer group that advised Commissioner Winder and I on our priorities on the things that we ran on together. So no county resources are used for that group. This, just, there's a couple other things that were brought up, I think, in the comments. We've spent many hours with Frank Dean assessing what's happening in our voter services and feel very confident about what he's doing. So I know Commissioner DiBella has done that as well. So why don't we move on to our motions and some of the issues we're going to tackle? So first, I'll just move on to the approval of minutes. I'll make a motion to approve the February 1st, 2024 minutes of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners meeting. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Is there any board comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None? Okay, motion carries. So I'll bring up our Director of Elections, Frank Dean, to talk about an authorization of potential changes to polling locations. Go ahead.
Good afternoon, Election Board. We have two matters before you. The first, as Commissioner McPhee just mentioned, is the authorization of changes to some polling locations. I'd like to request authorization for the relocation of a few polling locations for the 2024 primary election taking place on April 23rd, 2024. The Board of Elections has given the authority by the election code to relocate polling locations as they see fit. And today, I am seeking approval for the board to relocate 17 polling locations. These locations are listed in the agenda attachment entitled, "March 21st, 2024 Polling Location Relocations." Notice has been posted at these locations that the polls are being moved as required by law, and the locations have all been notified of the move. In addition to notice being posted, we will notify representatives from the county Republican and Democratic Committees regarding those moves. And every voter in those precincts will be mailed a new voter ID card indication of the location change and identifying their new polling location. I'm happy to answer any questions you have and request that the board approve these relocations as presented.
Quick question. Is this a relocation for just the, for the primary? Or is this a permanent relocation, change?
This would be a permanent change. There's only one mechanism for moving polling locations, and it's you folks having this meeting and approving it. We will be revisiting many of these locations after the primary to move most of them back. About half of these are movements due to Passover.
Right, that's what I'm saying. So they're not, they're basically permanent changes for the primary, but then you're, there's going to be the move them back after the primary.
But we do have to act again.
Yeah, act again. That's right. So I just want to be clear.
New cards get mailed each time. New postings go up each time.
But you're right, because there are, I think there was like a half a dozen or so, or close to half a dozen that were related to synagogues and all that that are currently used. So, which is totally understandable.
And on an adjacent note, people are aware of the fire that happened yesterday. We've already secured a replacement location for Montgomery IV. We'll be having an additional election board meeting to approve that location change. So if any of those voters are tuning in, just know that our staff have already secured a relocated facility. And it'll be the community center, which I'm sure most of the people listening and that care about that poll are aware of. But all of those postings and letters will go out.
Could we, when you actually move in that direction for the community center, could we ensure that there's more handicap spots established for that because of the people that are going to be coming over from that community? Because I think the community is right across the street or close to it. But could we just make sure that they identify enough handicap parking?
I can reach out to the municipality and see if we can get any assistance there.
I mean, it's just temporary for that day. But we just want to make sure because of the amount of residents that would be coming over. You know, with the people that are already voting at there, we just may need to have a few more handicap spots available.
Of course.
Any other comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. We'll move on to ours.
There was no motion.
So I made the motion to approve Resolution 3.1 as described by the Director of Elections, Frank Dean, regarding authorization of changes to polling locations. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. So our second topic will be regarding the authorization of satellite office dates and times of operation. Go ahead.
The Montgomery County Board of Elections has the jurisdiction over the conduct of primaries and elections in Montgomery County and permits counties to, under the election code, which permits counties to administer elections and establish satellite offices to aid in that purpose. The Board currently has four established permanent satellite office locations. The Willow Grove Annex, located at 102 North York Road in Willow Grove. The Montgomery County Lansdale Office, located at 421 West Main Street in Lansdale. The Lower Marion MDJ Court, located at 925 Montgomery Avenue in Narberth. And the Montgomery County Office of Public Health, located at 364 King Street in Pottstown. I would like to request today to expand the dates and hours of operation of these locations for the upcoming April 23rd, 2024 primary election. The proposed hours and dates of operation are included on the attached document titled, "Satellite Office Locations and Hours of Operations." The locations and dates of operation are available on our website. Also, I can share it afterwards. But the same weekends that we always run these locations, the only difference for this election is we typically run two locations every day. We would be running three locations each day.
Got it. Thank you. So I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 3.2 as described by Director of Elections, Frank Dean. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any board comment?
So the hours identified within, you provided, this is, the hours are basically 11 to 4 and a different date. So like you said, it's, you're doing, could you repeat that? It was three locations?
Three locations each day.
Each day instead of?
Instead of two.
And the hours of operation, have they changed? Or is it, the hours of operation are basically the same?
The hours of operation and the locations have all been the same since 2021's primary. The only change in there is we used to have the Pottstown office based in the community college and moved it to the Office of Public Health when the college was undergoing renovations. Everything else has been the same for.
Right. And have we identified a cost?
I'm sorry?
Have we identified a cost for extended additional hours or additional location?
I could obtain that for you. All of that, however, is reimbursable under our Act 88 grant funding.
From the state? But still, it's taxpayer money.
Correct.
Right. As I mentioned about, you know, I'm fine with most of the resolution as far as expanding the satellite and moving to the third day and additional hours and all that. I'm okay with that. I would like, I mean, I would like to see the cost no matter what. Even though it's reimbursable, because it still rolls off. I get that. What I'm not comfortable with within the resolution is where the Board wishes further authority from setting the dates and hours of operation of existing satellite offices. And all future elections, to the Chief Clerk of the Board and Director of Elections, that's taking, basically, we're taking the authority away from us and we're passing it down. And I think that we're in place for oversight. Not that I anticipate that, you know, there will be many changes in the future. But again, I'm just not comfortable with that section of the resolution. And also, as mentioned, that with this addition to this agenda, I didn't have the opportunity, I would have liked to have been, do a little bit more research on what was approved and what was put in place in the past and understand this a little bit further. So as the resolution is written, I don't see myself supporting it.
Do you have anything?
No, I just, you know, want to say that, you know, I'm supportive of giving the, you know, the extra hours in that we're going to have more locations open during that timeframe. And it just gives our friends and neighbors more options in terms of dropping off their ballots. And I also want to say that I have faith in you as our Director of Elections and Lee as our Chief Clerk to make those kinds of adjustments and decisions. Sorry.
I said, "Ah, ah."
I'm sorry, I do.
Really, I'm out.
The truth comes out.
It's been out this for 13 years.
Really, I'm out.
Yeah, I want to say, I don't know if you realize you're talking about Lee.
Yeah, you will.
I think.
I'm out.
I think this is an important resolution. I think it was a mistake, and it was discussed in the legislature for several months, whether they would change the date of the primary. It didn't end up doing it. And in Montgomery County, we have over 100,000 people who live in Jewish households. And Passover is basically the same, for those who don't know, as Easter Sunday or Christmas. It's the first day is the most important. And that's why we're moving most of these polling places out of synagogues so people can worship. And it's also a reason to expand hours so people can vote at the time that suits them. So I support this for all of those reasons. Any other comment? Okay. So I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 3.2 as described by Director of Elections, Frank Dean. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor? Aye?
No.
Any opposed? Okay, so the motion carries, two to one. And that's our final motion. Thank you. Any, okay, so I'll make a motion to adjourn the March 21st, 2024 meeting of the Montgomery County Election Board. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any board comment? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Okay. We are adjourned. Thank you.